The meeting of the August 4th City Commission Meeting. First of all, we'll have the invocation and Pastor John Harms for the First Southern Baptist Church is here to lead us.
Thank you for being here this evening for the invitation and the folks here. I'm not used to, when I do this, seeing such a crowd. So obviously, there's a little bit of a sensitive issue that's going to be discussed of some sort. I guess I've had my head in the sand. But let's go ahead and pray and ask the Lord's wisdom upon this time. Father, we just come before you with a prayer of civility and desire for graciousness and respect of all persons here, of their opinions, whether they differ from ours or not. Lord, may we be open to hearing other people's thoughts and ways. Lord, again, we just ask for your guidance upon this proceeding this evening. I lift up our servants of the community here, our police, fire, EMS. Lord, that you will protect them and continue to guide and direct their ways as they seek justice in our city within our bounds here. Lord, I pray for our mayor and commissioners as well. May they seek justice and truth and a peaceable spirit for our community as well. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Would the Chief of Police like to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Seaman. Okay, we don't have any proclamations this evening. I don't have any personal appearances that's on the agenda. So we are ready for Agenda Item Number One, which is Public Comments. So if there's any comments that somebody would like to come forward, this is the perfect time to do it. Come out and state your name and address and you got up to five minutes to tell you what you're thinking. Now, if it's on the dog issue, we'll have the dog issue a little bit later.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else other than that? Okay. All right. So we'll close the public comments section at this point and we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which will be a Consent Agenda. Are there any questions in that area, guys?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Consent Agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. One discussion I would have is that I would sure appreciate on appropriations if we could have the 1 through 51 pages scanned in because I like looking through the first 40 pages for the next meeting. Any others comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are ready for Agenda Item Number Three, Smoking at Youth Recreational Facilities. So we're ready for some background.
Yes, sir. Oh, Kevin.
No, you go on.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you may recall, we were here a few weeks ago to discuss this topic and the Recreation Advisory Board recommended that smoking be banned in youth recreational events conducted by the City of El Dorado, including events held at the City of El Dorado Complexes, East Park, Central Park Ball Diamonds, McDonald Stadium, and Walnut River Complex. Since that meeting, I will tell you that I've only had a few comments regarding the subject and they've all been in favor of this new ordinance that we're bringing to you this evening for your consideration. Again, we're not prohibiting smoking at these events, we're just asking people to step back to the parking lots so we're taking away from the common areas, the bleachers, and the dugout area.
I mean, I kind of echo that. I've heard pretty good feedback. The few that weren't crazy about it weren't necessarily against it, they just weren't crazy about it. So I think for the most part, it'll be a positive thing, especially since we're dealing with the youth in the community. So I appreciate the Rec Board looking at it.
Kevin, this is only for youth events, this does not include adult softball leagues and that kind of stuff.
That is correct. Just youth recreational facilities sponsored by the City of El Dorado. If someone rents our facilities, it will be their decision whether to allow smoking or not.
We don't have a city adult softball league anymore?
We do have adult softball at the League Complex, but this would not apply.
Okay.
I have the opportunity to spend a lot of time at our Ball Diamonds coaching some of the youth sports and I think that having spoke to a lot of the parents and a lot of the players and a lot of the fans, like Jay said, there's some people that may not have been crazy about it, but they absolutely understand it. They think it's a, you know, it's the right thing to do, to move it away from the ball field. So I appreciate the Advisory Board taking this up and doing more research on it and bringing it to us.
Kevin, one question I'd have is if somebody's down there smoking in the stands that shouldn't be, what procedure do you do on something like that?
We have site supervisors at all of our youth activities. If it's, if we don't notice it, it's brought to our attention. We go over and politely ask them to refrain or to step back. In most cases, they do that willingly. We do get a little bit of negative feedback when we do that. By having this ordinance in place, right now, we're just doing it as a request. If we have this ordinance, we have a little something to stand behind that it is a city ordinance to move it back to the parking lot. Again, it's going to be recreation staff that's largely handling this issue. We don't intend to call the police department every time someone's smoking in a bleacher.
I think we're on the right track.
What's ordinance number ten?
G-1178.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number G-1178 and ordinance amending the City of El Dorado, Kansas Municipal Code as it pertains to smoking at youth recreational events.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Commissioner Badway?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, do you think that it'd be beneficial to move that dog ordinance Agenda Item up since we have a crowd so they're not waiting until the end?
It's okay with me, the train's been your policy, that's going to be a little discussion. Are all the Commissioners okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to jump Agenda Item Number Four and go to Agenda Item Number Five. And then we'll go back to four when we're done here. Dangerous Animal Ordinance. A little background here. The, we're here tonight just, at your last work session, a woman that works for the Kansas Humane Society came and visited with you about what other cities do. She subsequently made recommendations about which ordinances in cities were her favorites. We put those together and we want to introduce that to you tonight. You will notice that there is no action being asked for. There is, so while you could all vote to approve something tonight, it would be kind of out of character and not normal. I would say that I would be surprised if you did it in two weeks, but again, it's going to be on what your comfort level is on what you hear, how close it is to what you think you want, and then, and then we'll see where we go from there. But this is just a reflection of what we heard in that meeting and put into a draft-type ordinance.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. Brad Meyer, Public Works Department. As Herb said, this started back in early March, March 12th. We submitted some information, requested information from different entities on how they handle dangerous animals. That said, on March 24th, you had a work session where some individuals that requested that you repeal the current pit bull ordinance, it's been in effect since 1989, came to you and brought some valid points for repealing that ordinance. The gal from the Humane Society, actually she's the state president or something of the Humane Society, was here and visited with you and the commission told her to send me the information that she felt was most pertinent to El Dorado creating a dangerous dog ordinance. After a little bit of time, she did that. Everyone knows if you do this kind of research that it's not just something that you get overnight that you go Google because everything you read on the internet in those places is not always true. And so, once she sent us that information, your other direction to us was to send out requests for comments. Once we had something put together from our local veterinarians, which we did, as of today, we have received one response back from local vets. Local vet had some concerns about how some of the things on the draft that you have in front of you were written. That being said, what you have in front of you are pieces, as Herb said, from different communities. The lady that was here from Humane Society said that Lawrence Bonner Springs had the best dangerous animal ordinance. Lawrence had, was right behind with other parts of that same ordinance that were very good, very well-written, as well as a couple other cities.
Manhattan was one that they...
Manhattan was one that has been brought up several times. That being said, we went back and we took the pieces of each of those for you to look at tonight. Now, what you have in front of you tonight is not an ordinance or not ordinance numbers attached to it. It's pieces of that puzzle that will need to be put together to formulate a good dangerous dog ordinance. Now, what I will tell you is in doing a lot of this research to find out what different cities do and what they have and what they have on the books, while I was in college, they didn't allow you to plagiarize things, but I will tell you, animal license, animal ordinances within the state of Kansas are very well plagiarized. They're ordered exactly the same in lots and lots of different communities, even to the point of the best dangerous dog ordinances, tethering ordinances, you name it, registration, all that, very, very common that they're the same throughout the different communities. In checking that, we brought to you some of the key points for dangerous animal ordinance. Not one that's written, not one that's done and ready for you to approve. There are parts that are in different sections of our Chapter Six, which is our animal control or animal ordinances. They're in different sections of that chapter. So because it's not listed on this page, doesn't mean that we've omitted it, that we're taking it out. I'll tell you that the local vet had an excellent point about one of the very first ones, that there was a typo in the five or 10-day observation for a bite watch. We have no desire to make that change and in fact legally, we can't make that change. So we're human, things get copied and pasted and like I said, we reviewed it, we've had other folks review it, so that, but that doesn't matter. There are still things that will need to be tweaked and changed. And so I'm here tonight, you've had a little while to look at it. I'm here to answer any questions that you have, here to listen to what others have to say regarding it. Your direction to us at the time was to bring back something, do our research and bring it back, and I think you have key points there that are decisions that y'all will need to make about how you want it, if you want, if you want to mimic off of different cities, if you want to copy off of different cities. For instance, Wichita has ordinances, but there's still, it's still a breed-specific ordinance. It talks directly about a specific breed. There are those that you'll hear from later on this evening that don't want to mention breeds at all, don't want to have anything to do with breed, which there are cities that don't mention breeds. There are cities that have one strike, two strike, three strikes, even one that has four strikes. Some that just have one. Your dog bites a human being, it's out of the city. So those are questions, those are decisions that y'all will get to try to see, see what you would do in those situations, so.
Point out the big things to the commission and the city if you would.
We'll start with our neighbor closest to the west, Wichita, Kansas. They have a pit bull ordinance, but that pit bull ordinance says that if you're going to possess a pit bull in the city of Wichita, that you must microchip it, it must be sterilized, there must not be more than two in the house. They go into a breeder's permit to be able to have an unaltered animal, not really what we're talking about right here, and they charge you $100 per year to register that animal. And that was as of just this evening. Manhattan, Kansas, has a mandatory registration, microchipping mandatory, altering mandatory, leash muzzle mandatory, signage mandatory, and Manhattan as well has a list of animals on their list that they consider dangerous animals. City of Lawrence, after a conviction...
What's some of the names on there?
The names of...
Of the dogs or the breeds?
You have that in front, that's on the list of, it almost mirrors that one there.
Can you just read it?
Sure.
Well, and if you could maybe clarify during this, I had a couple questions similar to that. I mean, what we're putting under, kind of in this draft of dangerous dogs, isn't necessarily those breeds, correct? That was kind of a list of examples of, these are held to a little bit different standards because they're larger dogs and they could potentially cause life-threatening injuries, unlike a Chihuahua isn't probably going to kill somebody.
An Alaskan Chihuahua.
Now, they're going to bite, and more likely, they're going to bite more than the bigger dogs, but, and I shouldn't say Chihuahua, anyone who has a Chihuahua, I guess, smaller dogs. But isn't that what we're saying? I mean, we're not saying that this list of large dogs are dangerous dogs, they're just...
They're, and I will read you, it does not say that they're listed in a dangerous dog, in the dangerous dog ordinance. The list does not necessarily mean that that animal was dangerous. City of Manhattan chose to put them in the dangerous dog ordinance as a list. American Pit Bull Terrier, American Staffordshire Terrier, Argentine, some of these, I'm not even going to be able to say correctly because we don't have them around or in town, so Chows, Dobermans, German Shepherds, Rottweilers, wolf hybrids in some cases, there's a couple of cities that obviously, like us, we don't allow wolves or wolf hybrids, Rottweiler, German Shepherds, so nothing that, there are some of, like I say, I think that in thinking back, I bet we probably don't have two Chows in town. It's just not a breed that you see very often anymore. We may, but as a stance, I don't believe that we have that many in town. So some of those, just to answer your question, when you compare the fact that, yes, and I will use Chihuahua, I'll use Basset Hound because I have one of those, my Basset Hound is absolutely capable of biting someone. In fact, my house was broken into and my Basset Hound would have probably annihilated the person going downstairs in my house. Subsequently, she got into work for being a pet here over the years. But nonetheless, she is a lot less likely, you will probably trip over her before she will jump on you and have the ability to knock you over, where in some cases, you may meet up with a German Shepherd or a Rottweiler that weighs 100-plus pounds, and if they go to lunch and you would jump at you, they're going to knock over a guy my size. So the Chihuahua probably not going to knock over a 200-pound guy, but the Rottweiler Doverman probably could. And so, again, it's kind of one of those things, could the Chihuahua eat you just as quick? Yeah, ankle biters will get you awful quick, but the chance of the amount of damage that that dog could do in the amount of time that a person could get away from them is probably a lot less than the larger frame dogs.
Brad, we got dangerous dogs and then we got aggressive dogs at large. Now, does this automatically, if you got a dog on that list, you start out as a dangerous dog and aggressive dog just thought of, or do you have to earn that particular badge?
I don't know that you have to earn that. It's one of those, again, it's wording. I've had the dangerous and vicious discussion before, is a dangerous dog the same as a vicious dog? Could be, in some people's mind, so an aggressive dog could be considered in the same category.
So let me give you a scenario. We've got a new couple moving to town, they have an eight-year-old German Shepherd, house dog, you know, basically harmless, unless you're in the house after hours with them not there. Obviously, probably not, but for the most part, is it automatically that dog is a dangerous dog? It's on the list? They have to go down and chip it? They have to go down and buy insurance? They have to go down and do all the things that we require?
If the commission chose to go with it, yes.
I mean, with this, with what's laying in?
To go with a list, yes, that would be the case. If the commission so chose to just adopt a dangerous animal ordinance and didn't identify breeds and started out with, you said, like in baseball, you start out with a clean count when you walk up to the plate. Everybody would start out with a clean count. Then again, it's up to, it's up to the commission how you choose if you do the one strike or two strikes, how that happens. I also think that when you look at the bites, you have to look at, you have to look at each one on its own. You can't just say, well, the dog bit somebody, so it's automatically a dangerous animal. Again, I'll go back to my Basset Hound, so I don't pick on any breeds other than mine. If that dog had have bit somebody within my house, it would have been protecting its owner, its property, its whatever, which is instinctively how animals work. Now, if my Basset Hound gets away, which occasionally it does, and it goes over and it bites the neighbor because it's in its garage trying to get food and the neighbor shoo's it off and it bites the neighbor, you know, again, it depends on the situation.
I mean, all fairness, Lucy doesn't run very fast, though.
She doesn't run fast, but she hasn't been in the neighbor's dog food and they're droppin' for it. Nonetheless, that doesn't necessarily make her a dangerous animal. And so I think the criteria, when you go, when we set an ordinance, is we have to be reasonable. If the animal is in the back, in its own backyard and it kills a squirrel, not going to be considered a dangerous animal. If it gets out and it kills a neighbor's cat, there's going to be a problem because it's going to be an animal, animal attack. Now, I've been told before, dogs bite cats, cats don't bite dogs. So I think when we look at an ordinance like this, it's not something that is, that is quick and it's cut, it's dropping. In some cases, some cities have on their animal, animal attack, on their animal, animal bites, they have said, you'll get an administrative hearing, which makes good sense to me because then you get to look at the, at the facts of the case. One of our criteria in those was no charges will be filed, nothing will happen for five days. A, that gives us a chance, that gives the investigating department or agency a chance to finish the investigation and do a thorough job. You're talking about somebody's, somebody's pet. If it's because it got a hold of a wild rabbit out in the backyard and ate it, there are hunting dogs, that's what they're trained to do. They're trained to go and retrieve, they're trained to do those things. So I think when we, when you look at this and you understand the depth of it, it's going to require some thought in how this, how this happens.
Well, my thoughts on the, trying to determine, is it really a German Shepherd or is it more lab or is it more, I mean, where you draw the line at on that, just because it looks like a German Shepherd, it may not be a German Shepherd.
On all of our...
College, so.
On all of our animal licenses, we ask the vets to identify the breed of dog.
So it's up only to the vet?
Well, sure, because the animals will be licensed that time. Now, where the problem comes in there is when it's a Heinz 57 dog and the vet can't positively say it, then we have, then we have to take the vet's opinion, which we do, and we go with it. We've had pit bulls that are in town that a vet says, nope, it's not a pit bull, and say, okay, away you go, you got your pass, it's not a pit bull. So I think when we talk about breeds, I think that's something that's going to be up to the, up to the vet when they do their annual licensing for those animals, to give good descriptions regardless of what y'all decide tonight about what that is, to give good, honest descriptions. And guys, again, this is, this is not necessarily about the breed of dog, it is about the owner of the animals. I know, I know guys that own German Shepherds that are just as friendly as could be. I also know guys that own German Shepherds that I really don't want to be around, so...
This seems to affect anyone that owns a German Shepherd, not the bad guy. The good people are affected in a bad way. And that's what I'm kind of concerned with, with what I've read so far and heard, so I'm just having a problem with, with the list insurance, with the chipping, you know, just because it's this breed, I don't know where to draw the line. I think, I think you're, we're intruding into a lot of people's lives about their pets where 99% of the time, we don't need to be. There is that 1% of dog owners or 10% or 5%, whatever percent you want to use, that are, that are not good. So I don't want to make the 90% pay the price for the, for the few. And does this cover anything about dogs barking all night long?
Not in a dangerous animal ordinance, no, but we do have a nuisance ordinance that would cover that.
Because I hear more about can't stand the neighbor dog because it barks all night long.
Or it poops in your yard or...
Yeah, that usually goes away, but...
Maybe.
But anyway, back, back to this, how to handle this problem, because an aggressive dog running a large is not a good thing for any town, any city, or anybody who's at the wrong end of those teeth. Protecting everybody by making everybody, you know, I guess, get papers for their dogs and passports and...
I'll say...
I don't know if that's really going to be the answer to the problem for the one guy or two guys that have dogs that shouldn't be in the town.
I'll say, I mean, there's some things that I really like in this. I kind of feel similar a little bit. I'm not crazy about the list, that's something, you know, the list part, I'm not too keen on, but you did what we asked and I appreciate you looking into other communities. And just to reemphasize to everyone, we are considering a lot of things. And I think I get the feeling our goal was to find a way to eventually allow the pit bulls to be allowed, but to enforce some other things, to make sure people are protected. And so I think we're still on that journey and we'll continue that. I'm kind of anxious to hear what everyone has to say, but again, we're considering a lot and I thank you for doing the research and, but I'm kind of with Dave a little bit as far as the list. I'm not crazy about the list, but...
I have a few notes to also send you afterwards, just to kind of see what everyone...
I mean, I think to Chase's point, we, you know, we tasked city staff with communicating with the representative from the Humane Society that was here. That representative recommended the ordinance for Manhattan and some of these others. So we tasked city staff with just kind of compiling that and giving it to us to review. I don't think that there's, or I don't believe at least in my conversations, that there's any expectation from staff that we were going to come here tonight and say, hey, this is perfect, let's, let's approve or deny it tonight. I think that we have an opportunity now to kind of look at this. I think if, as a commission, we want, you know, right now, we have things that we want staff to look at, otherwise we could tell them, otherwise, I think that we have an opportunity now to take this and do a little bit of research on our own as well and then come back, email staff some questions and just kind of work through the process. I appreciate the work, Brad, that you guys have done to compile that information. You know, we've, I think all of us up here have received a lot of emails and phone calls and communications about this, this ordinance. But again, it's not, you know, this is just a, just to reiterate to everybody, this is just a draft, it's just an opportunity for us to review what we asked them to bring before us. So I, speaking for myself, there... So, speaking for myself, there was never an intention to come here tonight and say, hey, we're going to approve an ordinance or deny one, so. I have challenges with, I have concerns with the list as well, but I think that these are all things that we can ask the questions and get more input from the community and kind of see where we move forward from here.
And again, the list is just one community's way to...
Sure.
...to address the issue. Not necessarily the way that we're looking, but it was one that the expert asked us to investigate, so...
Right. Well, I'd like to say that I appreciate you bringing this to us, and I think probably working from the toughest regs to what we like is probably a good way to do it.
I agree with that.
Work backwards through that.
Absolutely.
This is very comprehensive, and I know it took a lot of time, and surely we can find something in here.
Is there something, do we have something to say that an animal has an incident and they're deemed aggressive, dangerous, whatever? Is there something that we have, like, do they have certain housing that they have to fulfill as far as fencing, you know, those kinds of things?
They do, and it's quite possible that I have everyone's ordinance except our own.
Okay.
No, I actually have it right here.
That's fine.
It's our, we have actually a section, a whole section that is set out to keeping a dangerous dog. We have dangerous dogs in town.
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't anything new. We have, on many occasions, had dangerous dogs where we had a bite, where we may have an attack, and where there wasn't serious or fatal injuries to the person, but the department has declared an animal dangerous or vicious. I guess I would say, when it comes to a responsible pet owner, that responsible pet owner understands the difference between an accident and something where the animal has something wrong with it, or it's being provoked, or whatever. And sometimes those owners make those decisions on their own. I've had, I had a bite that I worked several years ago myself where a young, a small child was bitten. The first thing that dad did was the dog has to go. It cannot bite my child. It cannot bite my child. And so, the parents, the father, got rid of the dog right away. We still declared the dog dangerous. It took him about 30 days to find him a good home somewhere else. I would consider the guy a responsible pet owner, licensed, sterilized, all of these things. It was an incident that happened, but it was one he wasn't willing to let happen again. He said, whether the child was downed by the food bowl or not, or pulled his tail or whatever, it doesn't matter. I can't take that chance. So, in that case, the parent responded in the manner they thought was best. We've also had it where we have declared an animal dangerous or vicious, and then they go into that next step. And that next step is making sure you have a four-sided pin that's at least 18 inches in the ground. If it's on a leash, it can't be longer than four feet, so on and so forth. But that's already in our code. That's already in Chapter Six, that allows them to do those things and still keep the dog. Now, once you have done those things, your animal's been declared dangerous or vicious, if it happens again, then you're done. Then you're gone, so. We have that already in place. There would be, with this, there would be some, if that may actually move over into the dangerous animal ordinance, it may stay separate. I mean, there's two different ways to look at that, so. Just like tethering, when we look at Chapter Six, when we look at things, and this code, this was last modified in 2007, I think, maybe, is that, yes, well, anyway.
It was eight or nine.
Was it?
Yeah. I was involved.
Time flies when you have fun. As we do those things, as we review those policies and those procedures and how we do things, I make notes every time we have something that you go, gosh, I wish I'd said just this little bit different. I wish this was worded just a little bit differently in the ordinance. And so, as we go into making this change in Chapter Six for a dangerous animal ordinance, there are some other things that are going to come to you at the end, when everything's all been hashed out, like our tethering law, to make changes to that because we've recently had some issues. They've got notes on the inside of the file about changing the tethery ordinance. So, how long can an animal be on a tether? You know, what can be used, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's going to be things throughout the chapter that you will see at the end to make changes to it because that way, we keep continually protecting our citizens and protecting the animals as well, so.
Very good.
Brad, you got any numbers on, like, bite reports in the last couple of years in the city limits of El Dorado? How many we had?
How many years would you like me to go back this way?
Oh, the last couple of years.
Um, I do, just give me one second. It's on a pretty little printout, they did. I can tell you from last year, there were three, I believe, two of which were pit bulls, one was a German Shepherd. 2013, no, I'm sorry, not German Shepherd. I did that. All you German Shepherd people out there, I'm sorry. Bite cases, 2013, we had four. Two were Huskies and two were pit bulls. In 2012, we had four. One was a Rottweiler, three were pit bulls. In '11, one Rottweiler. One bite that year, that's a good year. 2010, none that were recordable. And then nine, we were back to four again, Rottweiler, German Shepherd, Akita, and pit bull. It seems almost every year, we have at least one or two pit bull bites, even though we have a ban.
How can that be?
That seems a lot to me that you have a ban, but you still have the bite. As well, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that will help that is proactively licensing and knowing where animals are at. Our licensing numbers have gone up over the years. They continue to rise. So, that means we continue to get more and more animals licensed in the city, which is good information for us to have.
How many licensed dogs do we have?
How many dogs only? I can't answer that. I don't know. We had 60, in 2013, we had over 1,600 licenses issued. But I can't, I don't have dogs and cats separated out. Up from 1,500 in '12 and 1,400 in '11, so. 200 animals in a year, 200 animals over two years of animal licensing is good. Our animal control officer actively patrols for that. They actively checks for licenses. He'll work in an area, and we'll get a call of running at large. We'll get the dog back to the hunk, back to the owner, and then the control officer will work the area. He sees dogs, he goes up, knocks on the door, and finds out if they have a license or not. If not, you get a warning 10 days to get it, and you get it, and that's how those numbers continue to go up. Any other questions?
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to hear from the audience. So, whoever would like to come forward, please state your name and address. We'd be interested in your thoughts.
I'm Kathy Bailey. I live at 4481 Southeast Dulles Road, Alton County. I'm a long-term employee of the El Dorado Animal Clinic and Dr. Harpkins. There's several issues which Dr. Harpkins and some other people from my office will address. My biggest issue is the breed list. Working for the city, or working with the city concerning the pit bull law for all these years, I can't tell you how many times I've been dragged out to see the same white boxer because somebody identified it as a pit bull. I think the dog finally passed away. I think he got tired of meeting me once a year. Breed identification is extremely difficult. German Shepherd mixes are, you know, a dime a dozen. Are we going to label every German Shepherd in town, every German Shepherd mix is dangerous? It's just not fair to put a breed-specific law in. A good dangerous dog law, you bet. If that dog is dangerous, I don't care if it's a Chihuahua, or a Rott, or a Great Dane, or a pit. If that dog has an incident off of its property, then the dog needs to go, the dog and the owner need to go to court and have a determination made. You can't label breeds, you can't label a dog just by its breed. That's like us stereotyping people. We have very responsible dog owners in this town. We have some prettier responsible ones, hence we have the pit bull bites when we have no pit bulls. And I really truly think that El Dorado should adopt Wichita's pit bull ordinance because it's well done, as Brad said, they have to be altered, they have to be chipped. The license fee is higher, and many of these cities will have a, this breed owner is held to a higher sense of responsibility, but the dog isn't labeled dangerous from the get-go. There was a Pomeranian that killed a six-week-old baby. Who would have thought? There's pit bulls that are used as service dogs and search-and-rescue dogs. So, my biggest issue is breed list, and I really appreciate your comments, Mr. Chapman, on that because I think that's one of the most, why spend our money, our city's money, running down every Shepherd mix that may be mixed with a Basset Hound? And it is possible that can happen. Once knew a Doberman Basset Hound cross, really didn't want to label that dog dangerous. Let's not label our breeds. Let's label the dogs as they deserve it. If they're dangerous, then that kennel that Brad was referring to, that we already have in our law, let's not create something that is more difficult to enforce. Let's put some more bite in the dangerous law. Let's adopt Wichita's pit bull law and go from there.
Can I ask you a question?
You bet.
Most people, when they get a license for their dog, they usually have to bring the dog in.
Oh, yes. It requires a current rabies vaccination.
While you are with that dog, can you tell whether or not the dog is a little, let's say, on the edge?
On the edge? Sure you can. But remember, in a veterinary practice, many of them are going to be on the edge where they wouldn't be in a normal situation.
Right. And the reason I ask that, I mean, that's really the professional identifying a possible problem. I don't know if there's any room to go that direction or if that's possible.
You know, I don't think that would be a fair burden to place on veterinarians that are not behavior specialists. Because that is, you know, that is a specialty. Yes, I do a lot of training. I do a lot of behavior work. Yeah, I've been in dogs all my life. The worst bite I got was unprovoked, totally unexpected, from Labrador. I misread the dog, so...
It was just a question. I mean, there's...
Yeah, and sure, we see those.
We kind of lean toward you to guide it a little bit.
Yeah, we see those dogs that come in and you're going, oh, boy. This one's going to be interesting. But you've got to remember that in that situation, a dog that wouldn't bite in its own home...
I know I don't act the same when I'm in the doctor's.
Right. It's called Whitefoot Syndrome. Blood pressure goes up, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Kathy, I got one quick question. How would you decide what a dangerous dog is?
An unprovoked, well, a dog that's running loose, it chases, somebody invites it, I think each case does have to be, you know, case-by-case level. Something that happens in the own home would have to be investigated. Did the child provoke the dog? And I agree that if a dog bites a child, it needs to be removed from the home. But, you know, you would have to identify what, you know, if the dog was off its property and bit somebody, then that dog definitely needs to be listed as aggressive or dangerous because the owner is not responsible enough to keep the dog home. The owner needs to be labeled.
Okay.
So, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Turner. I live at 300 South Main, and I'm the office manager for the El Dorado Animal Clinic. A couple of the issues that I had have been addressed. One of my issues was with the five-day, that the animal would be destroyed if it was involved in an incident. It'd be destroyed within five days if it had already been deemed dangerous. And Brad said that that was a typo, that the 10-day rabies watch would still stay in place. A couple of other issues that I have is that a dangerous dog shall mean and include any of the following. Any dog which has a propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked, to cause injury, or to otherwise endanger the safety of human beings or domestic animals. We had a client who had a Greyhound. This Greyhound killed a cat. The cat was running loose. The dog killed it. That was incident one, and that deemed the dog as dangerous. Then some people moved in next door, and the next-door neighbors had a rabbit. And the rabbit got loose, and the rabbit got into the Greyhound's yard. And because the rabbit got into the Greyhound's yard, the Greyhound killed it. This dog had to be removed from its family, from its home, because it was deemed a dangerous dog. Every dog has the propensity, the tendency, or the possible disposition to attack unprovoked. They are dogs. Every dog has that possibility. The next thing that I had an issue with is, of course, the breed list. By putting a breed list together and saying that these animals that are on here are going to be held to a higher standard, these owners are going to be held to a higher standard, we can look in the past history and note the number of pit bull bites that have happened within the city limits of El Dorado, with an animal that was living within the city limits of El Dorado. And we can determine that outlawing breeds encourages outlaws to own these breeds. We are not going to cultivate responsible dog owners by listing specific breeds. The responsible dog owners are not going to bring their dog to the veterinarian to get their vaccinations. They are not going to bring their dog in and get it licensed with the city unless they are caught by the animal control officer. That does put a lot of burden on the animal control officer. As we've seen, there's a lot of dogs that escape that. They're hidden. They go into hiding. Outlaws know how to hide. We don't want to encourage that in our city limits. As you said, David, asking the veterinarians to determine whether or not the dogs seem to be aggressive when they brought them into the exam room, the people that are going to have the aggressive ones aren't going to bring them in. So, we shouldn't punish the people that are going to be responsible and make sure that if something does happen, if their dog is involved in an incident, it's at least been vaccinated against rabies. We don't want to punish them. The last issue that I have is the attacks on other animals. If any dangerous dog shall kill or wound, or assist in killing or wounding any animal, the owner or keeper shall pay a $250 fine, and the animal control officer or law enforcement officer is empowered to impound the dog, and after the expiration of a five-day waiting period exclusive of Sundays and holidays, shall destroy said dog. As I said before, a Greyhound killed a cat that was running loose and was deemed dangerous by a judge because the judge didn't like dogs, deemed the dog dangerous. So, that dog would fall into this list, and it would be destroyed. We need to put some determinations on here of what actually constitutes an attack on a domestic animal. A mouse is a domestic animal. A cat is a domestic animal. A flying squirrel is considered a domestic animal. It may be illegal to have within city limits of El Dorado, but it is still a domestic animal. We need to have some guidelines that are clear on this, considering that dogs are going to be dogs to prevent something from happening to good dogs that get into a bad I think that's all of the concerns that I have to voice tonight.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Good presentation.
Any questions? Any questions for me on anything?
Good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Bar. I live at 924 West Earth Street here in El Dorado. I'm here as a responsible citizen and a responsible pet owner. I've spent many hours of volunteer time working in my community to try to make it a better place to live. And I've seen where we have come quite a ways with our police department and several other things, making our community a better place. I'm a dog advocate. I'm not an expert on any breed. I've owned Chihuahuas, the Standard Poodle, a Doberman, Min Pins, a Dachshund, a Labrador, and a Terrier. I do, however, have a couple of favorite breeds. I don't own a pit bull, but I can say that I have spent 60 volunteer hours in a shelter caring for 400 pit bulls that were confiscated from a three-state binary. These were some of the most amazing dogs I had ever seen. I do currently own two dogs. I have a terrier mix, which is a rescue, and let me just say that she is the aggressor in my family. She weighs 24 pounds. I dare anybody to come in the yard. Okay, I do also own a Doberman. This Doberman is the second one that I've had. I've had lots of dogs. This is the sweetest, most loving, laid-back dog I've ever owned. I also have spent many hours and much time socializing her in large groups of people, small children, other adults, other dogs. She has also had some professional training. When we completed that, I trained on my own, and we will be training again in the fall. Both my dogs are tagged, vetted, chipped. They are house dogs. They do have a fenced-in backyard so that they can go out and exercise and play. When we're not in our yard, we're in our home, they are probably leashed while we're out with our dogs or visiting friends. I have invested a lot of time with my Doberman, probably more so than my terrier, just so her and I can be both good citizens of the community. I have a friend who was out walking this morning responsibly with her two dogs. When they were approached by two dangerous dogs, threatened her dogs and her. Her dogs reacted in a protective way, but she was able to talk them and turn them away. These two dogs were at large at 5:00 in the morning. We need responsible pet ownership. I think that is the whole thing that we're talking about here. I don't believe in punishing the ones that are good citizens. Fortunately, my friend and her animals made it home. When it comes to the DogBiteExperts.com information, I don't know who Hazel is, but I'm not sure that she's an expert. The DogBite.org is a national dog bite victims group. Generally speaking, victim groups are reactive, and rightfully so. But this may not be the best source of scientific-based study for policy determination. There was also a study referred to that was by Mary Clifton. His original article was to determine whether exotic cats could be kept humanely enslaved as pets. Then he admitted in 1982, when he became breed-specific, that his data was compiled using classified ads and media reports. So how credible are some of these things that we have looked into? I have all kinds of things from the CDC, which is the Centers for Disease Control, referring to dog bites, fatal dog bites, dangerous dog laws. And they've just decided that it may be not the ideal way to go with breed-specific. And then when you go breed-specific, how do you determine the breeds? Do you do DNA tests? Do you rely on your animal control officers? I mean, is there a board of veterinarians that are going to vote to decide what these are? And then from the American Temperament Test Society, this is based out of the state of Missouri. They provide a uniform and national program of temperament testing of pure breeds and spayed and neutered mixed dogs. They stage these tests to determine stability, shyness, aggressiveness, and friendliness towards the dogs. There was a pass fail rate, I believe they looked at 113 breeds. The number-one breed that failed the testing was the Sky Terrier. I found it interesting, I'm not going to go through all these breeds, but I found it interesting, number one is the most dangerous on down. One, two, three, four, four terriers. Then number 22 is a Shetland Sheepdog. That Chihuahua is number five. He's dangerous. Finally, we come up with one of the breeds that is mentioned. They come in at number 31. They really need, they were striving for a score of 83%. The Chow came in at 71.4%, and there were 98 tested. Again, we have terrier, 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 terrier. They're getting better. Another terrier, terrier, terrier. Oh, Doberman Pinscher, 68 on the worst list, according to the testing. They came in 78.5%, and there were 1,655 Dobermans tested. Again, going to the best, terrier, terrier. Oh, my gosh. Now we come in, and we have our Chow, our Doberman. Okay, the Yorkshire Terrier did pretty good. They tested at 82.9%, so they were pretty close. Some of the breeds that did better than 83% on the testing were at 109, the American Pit Bull Terrier, the American Staffordshire Terrier, the German Shepherd was 84.8%, and they studied 3,194 German Shepherds. The Rottweiler was next on the list, and the best boy there, I don't know where this comes from, was the Bull Terrier. He scored 91.1%, and there were 79 tested. I've got data on dog bites that comes from the American Veterinary Medical Association. So my point is, are the breed laws effective? Are they enforceable and manageable? Is the breed-specific ordinance economical? I ask you to please reconsider the breed-specific ordinance. Please consider an enforceable and reasonable and responsible ordinance that does not penalize specific breeds, but instead penalizes non-responsible owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Elliott, 201 South Summit. I have a dog on the, I call it the Baker's Dozen List. I don't like to call it the dangerous list. I have a German Shepherd. What was addressed in the paper, I think we're after what I have heard and discussed. You're dealing with the after the bite, after the dog gets out. That's not curing the problem. I think the number-one problem is education. The kids don't know what an animal is anymore. They haven't been taught like we have. Stay away from animals that you don't know. Schools ought to be taught, they ought to teach the kids. I think the wife and I would be happy to go to school with our dog and show the do's and don'ts on how to approach a dog, stay away from an animal. But nothing that we can do will keep a dog from biting if he's going to bite somebody. I was on the internet researching the danger dog. I don't like that. I like what the lady said earlier. It's the dog, not the breed. But right now, you're saying my dog is a dangerous dog. I classify that as a car, as a person out here with a concealed carry gun. That's all dangerous. It's the individual, not the gun, or not the car. To drive a car, you take two tests. You have insurance, and you get a tag. Carrying a concealed, you get fingerprinted, background checks. Your picture is put on the application. You take two tests to qualify to carry a concealed weapon. On your Dirty Dozen List, you go down, you pay $500 for a German Shepherd, you get a four-foot leash, and you can walk out the door. I think that people ought to be required, if there is a list, to me, every dog ought to be on the list. Every dog has been known to bite people or kill people. It's the dog and not the breed. But I think if we have the list, on the list of that animal, or that individual or family, would be required to take an obedience class to understand the dog, and the dog will understand commands. My German Shepherd is nine years old. Never been out of my backyard without being on a leash or with me beside it. I have all fenced-in backyard with five gates, and they're locked. It's not because the dog will get out, it's because of people getting in. I can leave all my gates open 24/7, and that dog will never leave the yard because I have taken time to train that dog. That dog will stay in the yard. Again, it's the dog, it's not the breed. And it's the people. If somebody gets bit or mauled, I would like for that to be investigated like a car accident. A lot of times, it's not the dog's fault. It's the person that's poking him with a stick or throwing rocks. The other day, my neighbor and I was on the sidewalk talking. A 19-year-old boy come walking, driving by on his bicycle on the sidewalk. I heard the bike hit the sidewalk, and I thought the boy fell off the bike. I turned around, and my German Shepherd was in the front yard. He was chasing my German Shepherd around the front yard. My dog was trained to run away, and he was trying to stay away from the boy. And I hollered at the boy, not very politely, "What are you doing with the dog?" "Well, I just want to pet your dog." Now, if that boy got bit and went to his mother, I'm sure she would have called the police and would have been down to my house. And whose fault would that have been? Who knows? It wasn't the dog's fault. Some records I researched here back in the 1980s up to 2003.
Mr. Elliott, you have about 30 seconds.
Thank you. 47% of dog bites in people that have been mauled and killed are the home, the family, of the owner of that pet. 21% are boys from under the age of 12. 17% of the dog bits are mixed breeds. And I have a list of things I think that ought to be on your list of requirements to have a so-called dangerous dog, but don't call it. One bad thing about you restoring my breed, my dog a bad dog, a dangerous dog, if I call my insurance company and says, "El Dorado requires me to have $50,000 more of insurance because I have a dangerous dog," they can cancel my insurance, and I will have to go out and try to get insurance because of my, it's on my house. Think about that with people with that they have to deal with. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom.
Hi, Steve Fellers, 2034 Chelsea Drive. I appreciate that Mr. Elliott is a responsible dog owner, which I think most people are in El Dorado, however, there are a few that are not. And I think that is why we do, in fact, have to have some type of ordinance. I would give you this example I thought of. Let's say that I go somewhere, and I have a three-year-old grandchild with me, and they walk across an underground fence into somebody else's yard. I don't know they have a dog, and my grandchild is bit. I don't really think that's fair. So my big concern is, what I think I would like you to focus on, it's dogs that do bite and have bitten someone. I think those are the dogs you need to deal with. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fellers.
I'm David Harton. I own the El Dorado Animal Clinic. I first want to say that if 401 Taylor had listened to me 35 years ago, Brad would have had his fur in his shirt right now. And when they put the, city put the pit bull ordinance together, I pushed real strong at that time for a vicious dog ordinance. I wanted a few teeth in for the dogs that actually were vicious, so that we could do something with them. At the time when the pit bull ordinance was in, we had wolves in town, and we couldn't do anything about them because they weren't pit bulls. And to me, they were way more vicious, way more dangerous than a lot of pit bulls were. The other point, when we come back to this breed-specific, one of the big problems with breed ordinances is identifying whether that animal has some of that breed in it. And we get this point every month, if not every week, at the shelter of determining if this dog has pit bull in it. And I've killed a lot of good dogs because pit bulls were prohibited in El Dorado. A lot of them were friendly though, but they were definitely pit bulls. So I have fought against that part of it for some time. Have done some good, but I've still done it. The other point, when we go labeling breeds, we also increase the liability awareness of those situations. Also increase the insurance liability, which will increase the insurance premium for the people that own those specific breeds that are good dogs. I take exception to number four on the dangerous dogs that says any dog not owned by governmental or law enforcement used primarily to guard public or private property. If you ask any dog, its big purpose is to protect its property or its people. And many of the bite cases we have is when the dog is perceiving a threat. I don't see in here, in a lot of places, that it should be of where if the dog is on his own premise, he should have more leeway on protection of that animal than if he's off the premise and running wild. If he's running wild, he shouldn't bite anybody. If he's on his own property, Brad had an incident several years ago that if his Basset Hound had gotten out of his carrier that night, he would have bitten that guy. And according to what I have seen here, Brad would be put up to scrutiny over $500 fine for his dog biting him, even though that person had hurt the riding pet fight. So there's a few places this ordinance really needs tweaked. I think the big thing is to get rid of the breed-specific. I think the big thing is to get rid of the breed specific legislation in it. I'd throw a clear out the window. If you want to keep pit bulls, I like the part on pit bulls being identified, marked chip and spayed or neutered. I do take a little exception, it says by a veterinarian licensed in the state of Kansas. Somebody may have a brother-in-law in Oklahoma that's a veterinarian, I'll take it to him. So I think licensed in the state of Kansas, if we take them out there and not make any difference. Other than that, I think Brad's trying pretty hard. Thank you.
Thanks, Davey.
Evening, Mayor, gentlemen. Name is Darryl Hawken, I live at three thirty Meadow Road. I am a longtime responsible dog owner. Particular dogs that I have have been mentioned here tonight as one of the dangerous dogs, but the list forgot to talk about intelligent dogs. The same breed is in the top four for most intelligent. So if it did bite someone, it was probably instructive. The same website mentioned tonight for the list also had an article that any breed of dog to show aggression, if raised incorrectly by irresponsible owners. So that goes on what a lot of these other folks had to say. And the word I have not heard that we talk about on the news in society every day is discrimination. You know? We don't discriminate in society as people, we try to get away from it. So with dogs, I think we've heard enough here tonight where Chihuahua, German Shepherd, it's a dog. A Chihuahua does not know that it is not as big as a Doberman. They don't know that. They don't. It's a known fact, conception, I think the vet might agree with. That's why the Chihuahuas will take on a master. But with all that said, I think this panel will make the right decisions. And I do disagree with the list that should go case by case, whose dog has done what, not what a dog could do. We don't know what we're going to do as people. How can we predict what that dog's going to do next week? Unless it has a track record, as we do, then we're in trouble with the law. It's the same thing. So it's like our children.
Thank you. Thank you, Darryl. Thank you.
Good evening, guys. I'm just a humble servant in the community to a lot of people that use me here. My name's Jonathan Zachary, I live at two eleven South Denver.
Thank you, Jonathan.
You know, I work, I work in the service business and I deal with lots of people and I guard them every single day. And I get chased around by any number of dogs. But any number of dogs that are on this list, as far as the thirteen are concerned, never had a problem with them. And the people that do know that their dogs might get after me will take care of them. And that's what we talk about as responsible dog owners. You know, I have a boxer that got out one day and got a hold of somebody's dog and shook it, tore hair out of it. Police showed up at my front door. I went in, I showed them the evidence of my rabies and all that stuff and, you know, they not bothered me about it. But then again, is my boxer going to be put on that dangerous dog list because he bit another dog? But when another cat comes in the yard from all the stray cats in the neighborhood, he's gone. And he chases those cats all over the place. You know, is he going to be deemed dangerous like the greyhound if he gets, if he gets a hold of a cat in his own yard? You know, if I took him to the vet, can they determine if he's dangerous or not? No, because I have one dog that likes to go to the vet, I have another dog that doesn't. And when I take him in there, one cowers and one loves to play with everybody. So I don't think it's specific to any specific breed of dog. I think it's more the owners, like everybody said here. And, you know, insurance purposes, yeah, you can get dropped on your insurance because you have one of the dogs on the insurance's list. And if you bring that up to the insurance, they'll drop you out. Or they'll raise your premium through the roof where you don't want to pay them. And what I paid for licensing my dogs and getting them spayed and neutered and their vaccinations and all that stuff, I don't think I should have to get insurance put on me and the other, you know, recommendations because I have one specific breed of dog on your list. Like I said, I get chased around yards every day by different breeds of dogs. And the little ones are the ones that come after me the most. So as far as breed specific, that should go out the window. Pit bulls, Staffordchers, bull terriers, you know? Rottweilers, Dobies, whatever, you know, it doesn't matter the breed of dog at all. And if you look in, you know, the newspaper clippings and all that, anytime you see a dog attack by a pit bull, it is in the headlines. But if you look at other dog attacks, there was a little boy killed in Colorado by a Labrador. But if you look into that article, they never once mention what kind of dog it was in the article. And is that going to be, you know, is that addressed there too? I mean, if, just because we had four pit bull bites here in town, Brad, I could add to your list just by the bulldogs that bit me, you know, because I'm in and out of their yards, you know? So, I mean, we could have a list of several different dog bites in this room just by myself alone by several different breeds of dogs. So, I mean, breed specific legislation is just kind of, you know, it's moot. Because any dog can bite you. And like they say, the people that raise and care for the dogs, I have people that tell me that, oh, no, he won't bite you, he won't bite you. And I get in the backyard and he's like, this is my territory and he'll chase me out of the backyard. But I don't hold the dog liable for that because he's doing exactly what his job is. You know, so breed specific is, like I said, I just think it should go out the window and everybody should be, should have to conform to the same guidelines, you know, and that's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thanks.
I want to, can I say something? I just want to, I want to thank all the responsible dog owners for coming out tonight and talking to us about this. You know, I think like we said before we opened it up for public comment, you know, there's a lot, we have, each of us have our own individual concerns about this list or about the, kind of the draft that was given to us. And again, to reiterate, it's, this is step one of hopefully a bunch of steps to get something good in front of, in front of us and in front of the citizens so that we can have a community full of responsible dog owners. So I very much appreciate everything that's been said and I don't want to stop that. I want to encourage people to come up and talk, but I would say that if there's new, additional new information that could help us make, kind of work through this, then I think that that would be beneficial as well. Not that the individual comments aren't beneficial to me. But I think that all of us are, are more than ready to kind of go home and tear apart the, this draft in general and look at the list and all aspects of it. So I really appreciate all of you that are responsible dog owners, are veterinarians, are, that work at our veterinarians. All of you at the different vets have seen me and my dogs at different times. And Kathy, I appreciate your, your comments and, and I appreciate you, I think you know that, you know, you've worked with us through some difficult times with our dogs. And so I just wanted, before it goes any further, I want to thank the responsible dog owners that are a big part of our community and those that participate in rescues and, you know, we have three dogs at home and all three of them are rescue dogs. None of them are on the list, but it doesn't mean I haven't always wanted a German Shepherd. But my wife gets her little dogs, so, yeah, it is what it is.
I'll add to that too. I thank everyone for coming out and being a part of it. I, I received, I'll just say, and this might be selfish, I mean, I received several emails saying we lack common sense for considering this. And, and I will say to that, I am, you know, kind of what Dave said, I appreciate that this is full and that we have an opportunity to trim it down to what is fair and what is right. I personally am not in favor of the list. I anticipate that will be something that will be taken care of. But, you know, selfishly, if we, you, to make any change at all, knowing there are people in the community ready for us to pull the trigger so they can, you know, take the steps they want to get new additions to the family, I just want to make sure that we are completely making the best changes possible because if someone turns, you know, a child gets bit, they're going to be calling us. And so that's selfishly, we're going to be the ones having to deal with that. And so I want to make sure that we take all the steps necessary to protect everyone and keep everyone accountable. And so, but I thank everyone for all the productive comments and I would encourage that. If anyone else has any productive thoughts to email us or call us, I welcome that and I think we've kind of got some direction for Brad.
It seemed like the one common denominator of everybody that came up was they were against the breed list. Maybe, I'd like to just see a show of hands, everyone that's here that is against the breed list. That's a lot of hands.
Yeah. And I think, real quick, I wanted to say too, I mean, we're not calling those breeds. I mean, that was, this is a compilation of information from other cities. This isn't even a draft of the ordinance. We're not calling those breeds dangerous, vicious.
Our guy didn't do that.
Horrible dogs. This is a compilation, what you've read was that. And so we are, again, like what I said, what Dave said, we're going to trim down from there and we're going to create our own and hopefully have the most efficient rules available.
I'd like to echo what the other three commissioners just said. I would also invite, and maybe staff could comment on this too. Anybody that has ideas that can be put into it, email them to us, share them with us because you might have something that we hadn't thought of. And it's going to be kind of a tough, it's going to be tough to get through this thing, to get everybody happy and still have teeth.
No pun intended.
Yeah. And I appreciate everybody that came in and talked.
Okay, I'd like to get back to the audience where we was talking, start with, is there anybody else that'd like to come forward? Give a talk? I thought I seen somebody start to set up or stand up one time.
My name is Becky Terry and I'm an owner of a breed specific dog that's on the list and I, I just got him. And I live at two fifteen South Denver and he's, he's not a vicious dog at all. My daughter's a teenager. I have a cat, he gets along with a cat. My daughter's friends come over, he cries every time when the kids leave, like whenever we leave, he cries. So, I mean, he's, he's not vicious at all, so I just don't think that the breed specific thing is, I don't think it's, should be enforced. Also, I think that if my dog is in my property, like in my domicile where I live, I'm a single mother. And if he's in the house and somebody breaks into my house and he's wanting to protect us, I don't think my dog should be punished for protecting his family. Because our dog is like part of our family. And, I mean, I have him tagged, he has his vaccinations, he's a rescue. So that's about it. I don't really have anything else to say.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
As a volunteer with a couple of rescues.
Ma'am, could you say your name and your address?
Oh, sorry, Karen Knight. I'm outside of the city, but it does affect me as well because I have brought in pit bulls to my home around my children unconscious. I would never bring in a dangerous one and I've had to look for help in Wichita. Excuse me, I'm nervous. It does affect rescues because they can't bring in pit bulls because they'll be with, they'll just be stuck with them. They can't adopt them to pretty much anywhere in Butler County. So if you're going to then add German Shepherds, Dobermans, one, I see an influx of those type of dogs end up in the shelter because people aren't going to be able to pay for fines or they're not going to be able to pay for the insurance. And there's already enough animals in the shelter that need, need a rescue. So I just kind of consider, again, you know, lifting the ban, look at the individual dogs. That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Karen.
Is there anybody else?
Hi, Merle. My name is Merrill Hodgson. I live at six thirty-four and a half north of Fort Worth. I love big dogs. But as far as breed list goes, I think the focus, what you should concentrate on, in my opinion, is a definition of a dangerous dog, a definition of a vicious dog, and the final requirement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frau.
Thank you.
Hey, is there anyone else? I'd like to thank everyone here for coming up and giving your points and I think this probably helped Brad, you know, as he sits down on this kind of stuff and what we do, it sure gives us some direction on what to do with this, in my opinion. And I think we can sit down and do some more work on this and see where we go with it. Anybody want to add? I, you know, everything that was said tonight, I'd have to agree with. And we just want to do the right thing because I know, as I said here, you're sitting there thinking, you know, if you had one child or person that's seriously injured, we'd all feel bad, you know, what goes on. So it's kind of a real tough, we want to do the right thing when we do this. So I think we're taking it slow and trying to do it right, so.
So do we want to give the staff any direction tonight or do we want to just kind of let them formulate kind of a plan from what they've heard from us and citizens?
I mean, I think that they've.
I could, I mean, I could list it now or I could send you my notes from it. I have bullet points, things that I just kind of thought stuck out to me to maybe reconsider. I kind of like a little bit of the Wichita stuff. But, I mean, you can do that tonight or I can email.
I'm asking staff if they'd like direction on what to do, then.
I mean, I heard lots about the list.
I think it's, I think that you guys really heard from each of us and you heard from, from the community and I think it's an opportunity to go back and kind of scrub it again and see what happens. And we'll, we'll take another look at, at another draft, I would think.
And if you have things that you want to make sure get in there, send it to me and we'll, we'll do it, do it again.
Yeah, send your ideas because anything we can clarify, anybody in the, in the audience, anything we can clarify, anything we can use, double check and scrub twice and I think we'll be good, so. Anything you got, send it to us, please.
Cool.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks again, everyone, for, for coming out. These are the responsible dog owners in our community. It's always good to hear people come up and say, you know, I own a dog of a certain breed and he's such a good dog. We don't, we rarely hear someone come up and say, I own a Labrador Retriever and they like to eat people. I mean, so you guys are the responsible dog owners and I appreciate that. And, and again, it's, if we had an entire community of responsible dog owners, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So go out and, and spread the good word for responsible dog owners and this will help us along in the process, I'm sure.
The one point I want to kind of make is I think we need to really focus on the outlaw of dog owners and not penalize the, the good dog owners. How we get there, I don't know, but, but to penalize the citizens of El Dorado for, for being good dog owners because they have an eighty-pound dog is wrong, in my opinion. So I, I want teeth in the dogs that aren't supposed to be here, legally. That, that's kind of how I feel. I used to not have a dog, I have a dog now. So I understand dogs. And he's pretty much harmless, but he'll hunt any, any. And he's pretty much harmless, but he'll hunt any, 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 any other, well, birds mainly. German Shorthair, so.
They don't like cats, they don't like dogs.
See what?
They don't like cats at all.
No, no, no.
Neither does-
Neither does, my wife's Yorkie and she doesn't hunt.
But thank you again for coming out.
And no breed specific, most people said, and the directory of the Humane Society, that was her focus that night, she was here, that I remember about that, so that's definitely, where I'd be starting at, Brad, would be that part of it.
Question.
Sure.
He said director of the Humane Society.
Can you go on to the mic, please?
Okay. Okay, I have a question. What director of-
Was, I don't know those-
She was the state director and I think she was from Liz and Lawrence.
She's worked for Lawrence and then got hired by the Humane-
Humane Society of the United States?
Humane Society.
She's the annual state director of the Humane Society of the United States, Midge Christen.
Okay, thank you. The Humane Society of the United States, in my opinion, would like to eliminate all domestic animals. Would all be vegans and we wouldn't have pets, so.
Might, might give Midge a call.
Yeah, thank you.
That's interesting. Okay, I think that's enough for this evening on that subject. You guys okay? Anything else you want to say? Let's move back to agenda item number four, which is transient vendor permit discussion.
There's plenty of good meeting left, you don't need to leave.
Mr. Mayor and City Commission, a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Young asked us to take a look at the door-to-door transient vendor permits that we offer. He was concerned about the competition with local businesses who have to pay overhead for building space, employees, et cetera, and these vendors that come in and only have to pay the $50 a day for the City of El Dorado or 500 a year and are able to sell on the corners here in the City of El Dorado or sell door-to-door. We, I provided you with a list, should have been on the dais in front of you, though that is what we found from the cities who answered the question. And you can see that it's anywhere from $5 a day to, there's one that actually isn't on there at this point because I just received it this afternoon, but it was 365 a year for local vendors and up to $900 a year for vendors outside the city limits. We have requested that Main Street, the Chamber, and El Dorado Inc. come in. They have some things to discuss with you regarding local businesses and kind of how they feel about transient vendors and then we'll be looking for direction on how you want to proceed from there, if you want to raise the fees, if you want to put stricter limits on it, kind of how you want us to move forward. You want to start, Linda?
Linda Jolly with El Dorado Inc. And for a long time, I've called myself a sales tax cop because often through the years you'll see vendors setting up on street corners, they're competing with our local businesses and it's very difficult. Oftentimes, the street vendor shows up on Friday, Saturday. We have had kind of a policy or a procedure that says you can call in, sometimes you call 911, they get hold of the police department, they go and check and see if they actually have a vendor's permit. But oftentimes, you have people coming in and they do not have a vendor's permit at all. Another challenge to all of this is to determine whether they actually collect and if they collect, do they remit that sales tax to the state? Our local businesses collect sales tax, they remit to the state in most instances and they pay real property taxes. So I think it's quite a competition with our local business to see street vendors. I'm also not a fan of seeing the rugs and mattresses and all these things out on the street. I know that there is an opportunity in the produce sector for people that would like to sell produce, possibly to be in farmers' markets rather than just on a street corner. Again, they do compete with local business that carries that same product, but at least we'd have the opportunity then to have a controlled situation where we know that they have some type of a vendor permit and also we can keep track of their sales tax ID numbers. We can turn those into the state and the state can look and make sure the taxes are being paid, so. I really think that we do have some special events that happen throughout the year and we do have a need for some vendors at those times, again. I think through the years, we've learned a lot and we've started being more responsible about making sure that we have those tax ID numbers, but again, I think when you consider this issue, please take into account that we want sales tax collected and remitted. Think of all the wonderful projects we have in our community as a result of sales tax collections and I think we also need to look at the impact that it has on our local businesses. So, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Suzie here, Holly?
I'm Holly, from El Dorado Main Street. Our position on it, as long as they have the proper licensing with the agriculture department and the City of El Dorado and whichever event, or if they're just a city, I mean, like the farmers' markets, we have no issue with, but we had an issue this last weekend with someone coming to the festival and setting up across the street at the gas station illegally and it was called in and taken care of by the police department and we were very happy with how they handled it. So I, as long as they are doing what they're supposed to be doing, we have no issue, but that's all I have. You guys have any questions for us?
Thanks, Holly.
Thanks, Holly.
Hi, this is Suzie Carson with the Chamber. I think there's a lot of things to look at here. I don't see an issue, so to speak, of people setting up in different places. I do agree with Linda from El Dorado Inc. that sales tax probably needs to be looked at, but I do think there's ways that we can go about doing that. I like the idea of maybe not having them all over town, but then again, how that's controlled, I don't, I think there's a lot of different answers to that. As far as the local vendors, I think if we do restrict a place for people to sell these local items, or excuse me, someone that doesn't pay property tax can go into a specified location, I think maybe, I think maybe the local vendor should have the option to also sell against the competitor for, since they're already paying property taxes and maybe not pay as much of the fee, so to speak. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzie. Thanks, Suzie.
You know, I will say, I brought this up, I had an opportunity to talk to quite a few business owners throughout town, a lot of them down on Main Street. We're fortunate enough to have some kind of, you know, niche shops down, down on Main Street and whether it's t-shirts or clothing or accessories or whatever, you know, we've got some great shops down on Main. Now, all of these, all of these owners down there, they pay their insurance, they pay rent on a building or payment, they pay their property taxes, they've got all these expenses so that they can stay open down on Main Street. And then on a Saturday afternoon and, or Sunday afternoon and, you know, in the summer, you can drive down Central and someone's got a trailer and they're standing out there selling purses or selling t-shirts or, you know, that's directly competing with our, our local businesses and it costs them $50 and they may or may not be paying sales tax. That's what my biggest concern in this is and that's the reason I brought this up. I think that, I think that by handling it the way that we've been handling it, we are creating an environment that is counterintuitive to growing our businesses downtown, growing our businesses throughout town, not just downtown. I think we're creating an environment where it's very easy for someone from outside of El Dorado to come in for a day and take, take the business away because they don't have the overhead and they don't have those costs. Now, as it pertains to special events or when we have festivals, that's, that's a whole different, for me, that's, that's a completely different scenario. I'm talking about any given Thursday evening when somebody's selling rugs or mattresses or purses or t-shirts, you know, out of the back of their truck for 50 bucks and we've got, we've got businesses in our town that are struggling to stay afloat and employ people in our town and, you know, I just, I think that's the reason I brought this up, that's the reason I wanted this to be addressed and for us to at least kind of get educated on it.
I completely agree with you on that. I, our only concern is I don't want to start the can of worms with our events. I don't ever want it to be where we can't have vendors at the car show or anything like that.
Sure. And again, for me, event-driven activities are totally, and I guess in my mind, are totally separate and that's, that's the exception to the rule. Again, my, my concern is the, is the Thursday evening guy driving through town and sets up, you know, at the corner of Sixth and Main and sells everything under the, you know, under the sun and I'm relatively confident, we're not collecting sales tax on that. And half the time, I'm pretty confident that they haven't picked up their $50 retailer's fee, but even if they do, even if they pay that $50, still, it's, it's counterproductive for us trying to grow our businesses within our town.
Well, and I think as a point of clarification, if you host an event, so like Frontier Western Days, it's the event host that's required to give us a list of all their vendors and their tax ID numbers and so the situation that Holly talked about-
Is covered.
-that's happened before and-
And it's covered.
And it was- And it's different under the state too. I mean, not-
So that's all covered.
Yeah.
Again, I'm, that's not, that's not where my focus is. My focuses are on, my focus is on those people that are coming into town, driving through, you know, it's like, it's like, you know, they're just doing a drive-by in El Dorado and taking businesses away from those people that are contributing to our community and giving jobs to our citizens and try and get better our community and it's, you know-
Not only that, I mean, I, sorry, but I, for the most part, agree with most of what Bill's saying and kind of what Linda said, there's times, and I'm not saying all vendors are sloppy and I'm not saying this is everyone, but there's been a few times you could drive down Central, looks like a garage fell, I mean, they have their product splashed across the parking lot and with Main and Central being, you know, our most traveled streets, anyone going through town, I just think it looks very tacky.
Two more comments. Two Fridays ago, mid-morning, six vendors on the street. I called into the city, we only have three vendor permits out. I actually stopped and purchased from one of the three vendors that had a permit who told me their prices had had to raise because now they were being forced to pay sales tax. Well, the truth is, they collect sales tax and remit it, which they obviously hadn't been doing. I, I controlled myself from saying, well, had I known that, I wouldn't have bought from you in the past, but, okay. Other situation is that you have to take into consideration if we had several vendors that want to set up on a corner, what about traffic control? What about all the things that the city has to deal with? Even zoning, I mean, nobody is saying, is the zoning correct for sure? What about traffic? We had a situation where people talked about putting several vendors on a corner that is on Central that would be very congested to get in and out of. Do they have to give us a site plan before they start doing that? I mean, there's lots of considerations there that are, that our normal businesses have to go through to be able to sell their first product and yet we let the street vendor come in and oftentimes, if they aren't locals, then obviously that money goes out of our community too and it doesn't turn within the community. So, you know, if across the street from Dave, somebody comes with carpet in the back of a van, is that fair? I mean, truthfully, I mean, it could even-
You drive to Wichita with them.
Well, they might do that.
They would.
But as I said, I just, a couple of other comments, I mean, I thought that was interesting on that Friday because then by noon, when I went back out, a lot of them were missing, so I think they probably, somebody talked to them, but anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Well, I'm going to do a disclaimer, everything I say is not how I feel, before I start.
How's that work? I'm anxious to hear.
Yeah.
Okay. There is also the person that happens to own the piece of property that pays the taxes that has an opportunity to make a $100 bill or $200 bill or $500 a month, if not a thousand. So what do we do with that guy? Tell him that it's not feasible or we do not like him to use his property as he sees fit because we don't like it? Second thing of it is, if, if these vendors were not being patronized by the citizens, they would not be here. So what are we telling our citizens? We don't want you to buy that stuff from those people.
I'm not advocating that vendors don't set up in town. I'm just saying it's possible-
It's not how I believe, but it's the other side of the coin. I'm just, I'm putting it out there for you to think about. I'm not going to argue it. Do they or do they not sales ta, pay sales tax? Yeah, we have a way of looking into that and you know as well as I do, that's not the easiest thing to look into. So that's an unanswered question. So the big point of it is, is one, the citizens obviously are using these people to buy stuff from or they wouldn't be here. I know a particular stand that is there two to three days out of the week, every week. I'm sure they're paying their permit because they probably wouldn't be there because they're very well-used. I've seen several people, as a matter of fact, I saw you there, Linda.
You're right.
And I've seen a couple of commissioners' wives there. So what's the message we really want to send as in, as in that? And on the flip side of the coin, would I be upset if somebody parked over a quick trip and started selling carpet out of their pickup? Probably would. Do they have the right to do that? Today, they do.
Those are good points.
So, this is America. We did not build, El Dorado was not built on you can't do that and we should protect this, so we, we get into that protection thing, we want to take it very lightly because this has been talked to me about by downtown vendors and I, I've sold my lot before, I refuse to sell it now, just due to the fact of some of the negativity that comes from it. It was profitable to my back pocket, I sold crab legs and t-shirts and all kinds of good stuff, a lot of frozen seafood, that was my favorite.
I didn't get any crab legs.
Hmm? Well, that was a long time ago. Now, you didn't like, you don't like-
I've been here a long time.
Yeah, but you don't like fish, I think.
I liked crab legs.
Well, you should have been there then. But anyway, my point is, is that it's a slippery slope on either side we go. Whether we raise these rates, we may, we may upset some of our citizens because the purse guy doesn't come in or the area rug guy doesn't come through or the mattress salesman or the fruit people all of a sudden disappear that everybody seems to like to buy, so.
My question-
And is it fair enough to say that, oh, well, if it's a festival, it's okay? Because it's still stealing the same merchandise off the shelves of the people that you're trying to save.
And now that you say that, there's a few people downtown who say the same thing about, you know, when the festivals come and the food vendor is going to come, they say, well, they're taking away from my pocket, so you kind of, and you're making good points.
I'm just playing devil's advocate because I have benefited from being a property owner that collected $100 that got to go out and have fun.
My question would be, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
I think you're looking at two different issues, the same issue, but two different things, to raise the price or to designate a specific area. There are some businesses that, as Mr. Chapin said, that benefit from having some of these local vendors in front of him because it brings in business to their, to them, since the traffic. I do think there are, are ways to look at the sales tax. I think there's a lot of different spots on this that probably need to be looked at completely before decisions made, instead of just looking at one side because I think both sides have very valid points, but.
Thank you. My, my real quick question is, and I don't know, it's probably already in place, but if they get a permit, are there restrictions on how they can set up, like, you know, like the peach lady, to me, she's got a nice- Like, you know, like the peach lady, to me, she's got a nice little setup, keeps to herself, but then there's sometimes, like I said, the product is just-
Currently, there are no-
All over the place.
There are no restrictions at this time. I, I have a list of several things that I was gonna bring up to, um, regarding the transient vendors and the door-to-door vendors, um, and was looking for direction on how you'd like to go with each of those. First was the fees. Would you like us to raise them? Would you like lower, I don't, how, what direction would you like to go there? Um, would you like us to charge different fees for local vendors versus people from out of town? Um, do we want to limit the time that people are allowed to sell on the corners? Like, I mean, do you, do you want them to be able to sell into the evening or would you like to just limit them to certain days of the week, that kind of thing? Um, I also have several things regarding zoning, um, signs that they have out, um, tents, trailers, all those kind of things. Um, can they use them? What sizes? You know, do you want somebody with a large, you know, firework-sized tent out there or do you want to limit them to a certain size? Um, we also are requesting that they get permission from the landowner. We are cracking down on the sales tax thing and as Linda said, the gentleman from Wichita has contacted several of our vendors requesting that they pay sales tax and, um, do you want, if they're not paying sales tax, do you want us to revoke their permit? Um, and, and then a lot of what, uh, Chief Seaman and I were looking at is the punishment, the, the restrictions. Door-to-door vendors, I mean, what time do you want to limit them? When do you want to revoke their permit? I mean, how many complaints can they have before we say, you can't go door-to-door in our town anymore? So those are all things that we're looking at right now and are looking for direction on.
Could you send us that list?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll, and I'm just speaking, uh, for me, you know, I came into it with some initial thoughts and Dave made some points and I don't know what I think about everything on that list, but I'd be happy to make notes and kind of, I don't know, compile that with everyone else's and see what everyone thinks. Because I do, I want to be fair to everyone involved, um, and do it most efficient way and try to keep everything looking clean and keep everyone taken care of as much as possible. That's what I would like to do, is look at that list and kind of make notes.
I got beat up really bad a few years ago because I mentioned something about the ice cream man.
Be careful.
So I'm gonna tread real lightly. Uh, is, is that a door-to-door sale?
Yeah. Well, he's considered a transient vendor, not door-to-door because-
Okay.
He doesn't actually go door-to-door.
But he pays the fee.
They, they all, the door-to-door and the transient vendor fees are the same. It's fifty dollars a day or five hundred a year.
Okay. But every time he comes over, he's, he's, he's paid up, correct?
Yeah, he has a current permit, yes.
Now, as far as the door-to-door, when was the last time anybody in this room got knocked on by, on the door and somebody tried to sell them something?
Oh, been last month?
Last year.
I guess twice a year, Dave. I was thinking-
Actually selling something, not trying to get you to go to church.
There was a television sales or some sort of, something to do with TV out last weekend that was reported.
So like if Cox sent a person around, and not to be mean about Cox, I'm just using it as a-
I got, I was, I've been, everyone must think I need new windows because I've had people wanting to sell me siding and windows several times.
Okay. Because I'm evidently not home enough, so.
I'm not expecting them to turn off the lights and hide.
But anyway, um, I didn't know how big a problem the door-to-door was versus how much we're really more targeting West Central.
I'd say that the door-to-door problem, it is an issue. We've received several complaints from different people. We have denied two applications based on their, um, background checks. Chief Seaman would be happy to discuss that.
I'd like to interject something. In my view, I think the door-to-door sales people are more problematic for our department than probably the street-side vendors. Uh, I think it's our desire, if you guys are wanting to look at the transit vendor ordinance and approve it, we want to look at several things in it. All those applications have to come to me for approval, but keep in mind that that record check is pretty narrow. Uh, I can't run people on a nationwide NCIC computer because it's gotta be a current criminal investigation going, so usual, we'll, we'll run a local records check on, uh, if it's a, if it's a business corporation, something like that, we can look at Better Business Bureau and, uh, I can get some information that way on some of the door-to-door people, but most of the, uh, curb-side vendors, you know, aren't a business or corporation per se that you're gonna have any record on. Uh, if it is your desire to change that a little bit, just keep in mind that door-to-door and the sidewalk vendors are on the same ordinance and it's, ours is really pretty brief. It's a pretty brief ordinance. Uh, we've seen a couple of sample ordinances where they've got a little teeth in them to where this would probably be more to the door-to-door salesman, uh, because we've had them in the past that are very high-pressure sales, you have a hard time getting them out of your house, and those are the type that the police get called on. Some of those sample ordinances we've seen have given a little teeth for, you know, the police to make them cease that this is and we start getting complaints or that kind of thing. Obviously, anything that we would write up, we'd have Mr. Murphy check and make sure it was legal, what we're doing. Uh, but it, both are covered in that same ordinance and the way our ordinance is now is really a pretty brief ordinance, so I'd like to, if we're gonna redo it, have a little teeth in it as far as enforcement of it.
That, that's why I ask about the door-to-door because that seems to be probably more intrusive to the, to the citizens of El Dorado than somebody set up in a parking lot selling a purse.
And there's more of those, you think, you know, uh, people come and sell magazines, uh, you name it, they're, they're wanting to come door-to-door and sell it, so, uh, and we, we do generate quite a few complaints on that kind of stuff. Uh, citizens in this town are pretty good about calling us when, you know, somebody comes up to their door and is really high-pressure and, and, I mean, some of those people just won't take no for an answer, so, and those are the kind that I'm concerned with, so.
I'm, I'm more concerned putting some teeth there than I am on the, on the other vendors as far as that goes, as far as our fees. Um, you know, it's whatever you guys decide and whatever seems fair to everybody involved as far as that goes.
Again, I'd like to see that list. This, the questions that you need clarified on, I don't, off the top of my head, I haven't considered all of those, so that would help me.
But I, I think this is just kind of like the, the vicious dog thing. I mean, let's look at it and figure out what can work and five years later, the next commissioner will probably take pieces of it and put some more to it or less. Take, take it away. I mean, everybody's got a good idea in this, in this decade, will change next decade, so.
Couple of points I wrote down. We looked at this list, there's twenty-seven names on it and we're in the top twenty percent for what we charge now with other, you know, team, uh, like Ottawa, Augusta, Park City, Mal Bay, that kind of thing. So I, part of you says, I think we're charging enough. I'd, I'd like to be more proactive probably on making sure about the fee and sales tax collection. You know, if we see somebody set up, that the police can stop and ask to see their permit and, I don't know how you check the sales tax, but we get a little more proactive in that area if we can, um, and kind of let they go with that. I come from the, you know, we live in America and if people want to sell something and if somebody wants to come out on Dave's place and put a deal up and he can make a hundred dollars, you know, I'm with what's being said there, so that's kind of where I'm at on the deal. People come knocking on your door, you have to be careful because the Edward Jones guy could be out there, you could have church people out trying to do stuff, you could have politicians going door-to-door. I mean, you're, you're gonna hit all kinds of stuff and I don't see that as a problem today. Now, that could develop into a problem and somebody could call me and say, Mike, you're wrong, but you're gonna get some of that and that's just part of living in a house, the way I've always looked at it, so. So I guess we can take that information and you can send it out, tab to everybody, I guess what, we can kind of go from there. But I, I was surprised how high we are on the list of what we collect today, so.
Another little suggestion, and there again, it's just a thought outside the box that is gonna get real blunt. Could we put a, let, let's say, we, could we put a questionnaire on there that says, what do you think your expected sales per day would be? And let's, let's say, they say a thousand dollars. And then of a thousand dollars, we would collect ten? Or a hundred?
Ten.
Ten, okay. We could also charge a sur fee or a breathing air fee of the fine El Dorado or, if it rained that day, we could call it a stormwater fee or... That would cover the thousand dollars, the ten per, the ten, the one percent, that's ten dollars. So we, we kind of pre-collect our sales tax in a strange way, so, like I said, a disclaimer, I'm just thinking outside the box, don't mean anything by it, but it is an idea of some, of, if, if the big worry is sales tax? There it is.
Okay, we talked enough on that, we got a long list. Anybody else want to throw something real quick in? Ready to move on?
No, I'm ready.
Okay. Agenda item number six, issue, adoption of the South Central Kansas Region G multi-hazard, multi-juridicial hazard mitigation plan. Who would like to give us some background on this interesting subject?
Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, a little background on this subject, uh, the, uh, the federal government, in order to, uh, to qualify for federal grants, you must have a hazardous mitigation plan and that plan runs its course every so many years. Uh, the county, Butler County Emergency Management, uh, they, uh, were able to tie in with a, a full county agreement, uh, which these things are pretty extensive and, uh, not real user-friendly even. Uh, you can pull that up on the Butler County site and, uh, if, if you have a whole lot of time to read through it, uh, but there are all requirements that, uh, that we must meet if we want to qualify for some of the grants like we have in the past, like sirens, multiple warning sirens and such. Uh, it, it, it's kind of a no-brainer as far as adopting it because we don't qualify for grants if we don't. So we participated, uh, as a member in that group and, uh, so it's just a matter of adopting it and, uh, and it's there for the, for the using, if, uh, how user-friendly it would be, I kind of question that. But, uh, in order to qualify for the grants, it is required that we-
Kind of like-
-have a number of agreements we have, a hazard mitigation plan.
Kind of like you can't win if you don't buy a ticket, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
How much money does this cost us to, a year?
Oh, this mitigation plan was created by the state of Kansas, so the city of El Dorado didn't pay anything. The state of Kansas uses federal pass-down money to fund this thing. And so, instead of getting a fire truck or getting some piece of emergency equipment or something, they spent their money on this. They spent our money on this.
Our, our tax dollars, but we didn't ask, we didn't get asked about it.
So the state rises and pays for this? They did in this instance. Okay.
So it cost us no more to be in it?
Correct.
Or not in it?
And so when you have a FEMA, if you're, if you don't approve it and we have a tornado, we won't be eligible for FEMA relief.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
That's what you need to hear.
There you go.
And it's gonna cost us any-
Brad's gonna, Brad was here, he could probably tell you, Mike, but we've had disasters since I've been here and we've received FEMA funding. Okay.
Some of our other things, like the safe room out at the, at the fire station college, some warning sign, warning sirens, I'm told, things like that, but, but definitely, uh, the recovery from disaster.
Chief Moody, did you read that whole plan?
I did not. I-
I was gonna say, if you did, congratulate-
Don't think I could have bowled my work down if I would have tried to.
Yeah.
But, but I'm aware of all the, all the areas. I've, I've served as the emergency manager in Stafford County, so I, I kind of know that game also.
Is there anybody else from the city that's been, you know, because they got El Dorado on here, was you our representative in that group or is there some other people? Is there anybody else at the city that's read this plan? That's my question. Have you read it or?
I read, I, I think the, a section that went for like two-hundred-and-eighty or three-hundred pages-
Okay.
And then I discovered that there was another seven-hundred pages and thought I was gonna be ill.
Okay.
But if you wanted to know about the type of loan in, uh, section thirty-six of Township eleven, range thirty-three, I mean, you could certainly have that information available.
And it say loan?
Loan, L-O-A-M.
Okay, all right.
And it had more worthless information.
Okay. Now, I'll tell you why I asked that. You get in one of the big complicated deals and very back on page six-hundred-and-fifty might be a nice morsel that would help us, that the big cities have people sit and do nothing but read that stuff and us little guys don't have the time and the effort to do that. I've seen that on some loan activity that way through the state.
Well, one thing that might-
And I didn't know if there's anything-
Is emergency, emergency management, they, they serve the entire county and, and that is their loan, I mean, their sole, uh, responsibility. So we, we lean on them to, to give us guidance also with, and, and I would hope that they actually did read the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
But this is the, just a mitigation, so, um, something that would be specific to El Dorado in this book and one of the few things is we purchase property in the floodplain when it's available. That is a mitigation plan.
Okay.
Because our most, this talks about, what's our most potential? Flooding, tornado, um, they're looking at potential hazards and so, I guess I've just named the two biggest.
Yeah.
And so, it's how do we deal with those probabilities? What are we gonna do? And unfortunately, this document isn't very specific at all. I mean, I don't even think it lists where our shelters are. I mean, it's, it is, um, if people that would print this book wasted a thousand page, pieces of paper.
I couldn't believe two pages of ADP, PAI, you know, understanding what all the symbols were.
You know, one, one thing that's more important is, is to catch the, uh, I attended a, a couple-day session and on, on this specific topic and one thing that I learned was they, the state came out or the federal government came out with, uh, a new system of if you get your mitigation done at this many days, then you'll get this percentage of payout.
Yeah.
And this percentage you get, or this many days, you're gonna get a little less. And so, we, we need to know that because we sure wouldn't want to fall short of a couple of days of, if we just threw a few more people at it, uh, and we lost out on, on ten percent.
Well, then let's get this thing done. Resolution number-
Twenty-seven thirty-nine?
Twenty-seven thirty-nine. I move to approve resolution two-seven-three-nine, a resolution adopting the South Central Kansas Region G multi-hazard, multi-juridicial hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
Got a motion and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Agenda item number seven, receive a petition on project number four-five-four, sanitary sewer extension to serve six-oh-five and seven-oh-five Everhill Road.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, the property owners of six-oh-five and seven-oh-five have requested that we extend sanitary sewer service to them. Currently, both of those properties are served by septic, um, tanks. So we're asking you to consider accepting the petition this evening and authorize us to begin with plan preparation.
Who are the property owners or, I was trying to figure out where six-oh-five, seven-oh-five, Everhill Road was.
Um, seven-oh-five is the old triple-A lumber building.
Oh, Adelsberger's?
Adelsberger, and then there is a residence just to the north of them that is owned by a trust.
Okay. Is that in the city?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And really, until the stadium project came about, there wasn't a real feasible way to serve those properties with sanitary sewer. And now having sewer extended to serve the villas and the stadium made it more accessible to these property owners.
I think I remember reading they're gonna pay a hundred percent of that too?
They are. The...
Like thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars of that. The residence is paying a third and Adelsberger's property is paying for two-thirds. Looked at it as potential connections to the sewer system. So two for the AAA property and one for the residence.
Is that a standard petition that they gave you? I mean, was there any, I'm wondering, when you read through this resolution, talks about petitions, should we be seeing a copy of the petition too?
The petition is drafted by our bond counsel, Gilmore Bell.
Okay. And I'm just talking in the future, you know, I'm thinking about petitions that we got on streets and stuff like that around. If we do a resolution, talks about petition, we ought to know what the petition says if we're making a resolution. That's what I'm questioning.
Yeah, if that's the desire, we could definitely include those petitions in the packets. Just never have, so.
Do you understand why I'm questioning that? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number twenty-seven forty, a resolution determining the feasibility of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sanitary sewer extension improvements, project number four-five-four.
Second.
Got a motion and second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number eight, project number four-five-two, the 2014 sales tax resurfacing.
Yes, this is for the resurfacing of Broadview, Rado to Sixth Avenue State, Rado to Sixth, Rado, Broadview to State, Hillcrest, Second to Third, Third Avenue from Broadview to Oil Hill, State from Central to Rado and Broadview Court. The bids were received. Engineer's estimate was three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Low bidder was APAC Kansas at two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. And Cornejo and Sons submitted a bid of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. We're asking you to consider awarding the contract to APAC Kansas to proceed with the improvements.
Mr. Mayor, I move that as APAC Kansas has submitted the lowest and best bid for the project number four-five-two of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents and was under the engineer's estimate. The city manager be directed to award the contract to the said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second.
Got a motion and second? Any discussion? One quick thing I have, this is one project. Do we have any more? Because we talked about a hundred thousand.
We do. You will have the six-hundred-block summit, you'll have the concrete streets, Cave Springs and Atchison.
Thank you.
So there'll be more to come.
Alright. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are ready for agenda item...
Mr. Mayor, was that a five zero?
Do what?
Was that five zero?
Five zero, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, court changes.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we're coming before you tonight to discuss court costs. The city of El Dorado currently has the lowest court costs in the area, probably one of the lowest in the state. Costs associated with operating municipal court continue to rise when you determine all kinds of factors like technology, prisoner care, there's a lot of things involved in running municipal court. It's very expensive. Our current court cost is twenty-six dollars. We keep not a dime of that. Twenty dollars and fifty cents is mandated, it goes to the state of Kansas. Every jurisdiction has to pay that amount to the state of Kansas in their court costs and that's broke out into a number of things. A number of years ago, we raised court costs by five dollars and fifty cents. That five dollar and fifty cents goes to local nonprofit organizations such as funding the same house, et cetera. I did a little survey of the area here. A few weeks ago, I contacted most of these jurisdictions personally by phone. I contacted cities that were like El Dorado, pretty close in size. The average court cost in this area is seventy dollars. Like I said, ours is twenty-six. And I've got a list here. I don't want to go down on the list if you would like me to, but like I said, the average in this area is seventy dollars. The court clerk provided me a wall-back list that comes from her court clerk's organization of the cities that reported their court costs. When I figured that, the average was around seventy dollars. It's kind of interesting that a couple of these jurisdictions that I talked to, their court cost is currently seventy dollars or more. They're talking about raising it yet even more than that. So what we're asking is that we be allowed to raise our city of El Dorado court cost to seventy dollars. Currently, it's twenty-six, so that would be a raise of forty-four dollars.
Did we send that twenty-six to the state and they send us back to five fifty?
Twenty, twenty-fifty goes to the state.
We keep the five fifty?
Well, it's divvied out between the nonprofit...
But we're required by law to do that.
The twenty-fifty?
Five fifty. We chose to do that.
Yes.
Chief, can you discuss the other changes?
But did you want to do them all at once or...
They're all, it's all for the same ordinance.
The other thing, they're small things. When I got to looking at the city code under municipal court, it's got the date and time of our court listed wrong in ordinance. It says our regular court day is Wednesdays at two o'clock. It hasn't been Wednesdays at two o'clock for quite a few years. Our current court day is Monday at one o'clock. That's just a technicality that needs to be changed. I think there's also an ordinance that just needs updated that says the municipal judge appoints a court clerk, the city manager is the one that hires the court clerk, it's not the municipal judge. It's been that way for some time. So I think that's just another small technicality that needs to be fixed in the court. Was there something I'm missing?
The court staff have also requested that charges be added for continuance and suspensions. Those charges should be ten dollars apiece.
That's, that's something that's pretty typical along a lot of jurisdictions. When you, and Mr. Murphy might be able to articulate it a little better, when you have a case, say, that's pending for trial on municipal court and say the defendant or the defense attorney requests a continuance, that causes extra work for our court staff, reissuing of letters, you know, to come to court and whatnot. So I think that, I think the ten dollars is a very small price to pay for that because it does cause us extra work. When our court clerk has to send the paperwork to a state to suspend somebody's driver's license, that also requires extra work. So we're asking a ten-dollar fee whenever they're required to do that. Is that all of them? I think it is. Okay. Did I entertain any questions?
So when you called the surrounding communities, kind of, I know you said seventy's the average, but what was the range over there?
I can run, the list isn't that big. Andover is currently seventy dollars. Our Kansas City, seventy-one dollars. Augusta's actually the next lowest, from ours is thirty-five. Benton was forty-five. Butler County's ninety-three fifty. Irving's sixty-six. Douglas is seventy. Goddard's a hundred and ten. Newton's eighty. Rose Hill is seventy and Winfield is ninety-three fifty.
Doesn't sound like seventy's too out of line or is out of line at all.
Like I said, when I compiled that list from the cities that reported statewide to the county, or the city, excuse me, the Municipal Clerks Association, the average was about the same. It was around seventy bucks. So there are some that are a lot higher.
I move to approve ordinance G...
Eleven-seventy-nine?
Eleven-seventy-nine, an ordinance amending the municipal code, Section Two regarding the municipal court.
Second.
Got a motion and second? Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's gonna be, I think this is a good move. I think it's a good opportunity to move El Dorado out of maybe the title of being the cheapest place in Butler County to commit a crime. So I think that this hopefully can help us get down what we need done over municipal court, so. Thanks, guys.
About how long ago that twenty-six dollars was set? Was that like a couple years ago?
The five was done, I'm gonna say, seven or eight years ago. It was...
It's been since you've been here.
I did it. I asked the commission to, we were seeing a greater and greater unmet need for scarf and for...
Safe house.
Safe house. They had...
Our liquor puns were getting cut too.
And our liquor puns got cut, so...
We talked about that just a couple years ago. It's been since I've...
So that's, that's when it happened. But I bet it's been seven, probably.
The state's portion was nineteen fifty for years and they added another dollar in, wasn't it, probably three or four years ago?
Yeah, the time is kind of flies. But I think it was three years ago.
And I think when, because when the commission raised, put the piece on for not-for-profits, it was twenty-five even. I think the staff request was for three and the commission said, we'll just make it around twenty-five and did that.
I think you're right. And it was after that, the state added the dollar.
The state added it and then we added it up. We just bumped it up a couple years ago. Liquor tax still...
Do we still need that?
Don't know why.
Because we're still, I was looking here, didn't we build the budget where we was gonna collect a lot more court costs? And was that, was that already in the budget, what we're planning to do here?
I think the revenue in the court budget was increased in anticipation of raising the court cost, yes.
Okay. So we're gonna cover that way. As long as we're short in covering the court part of it, I'm just questioning, we're giving money out to, but we're still short of what we need.
Well, and like I said, we've never, we've never kept any of that court cost. There's some things, there's some things we're wanting to do within the court, costs money. Technology costs money. We're talking about, you know, eventually doing the e-citations and that type of thing. And I think it's the right direction to go, but those kind of things cost a lot of money to do.
So that's gonna help revenue? That's what I'm saying, I'm saying. Helping revenue, another way you help revenue is that five fifty. Now, I'm just saying, if it's that much of a need, I'm just throwing that out of conversation. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, if I could just add one brief anecdote, one of the things that we've talked from time to time about doing, and this isn't a hugely expensive thing, but putting some sort of a flat, big screen TV in the courtroom, because as it stands now, if we have to watch any video, a lot of times we have to adjourn to the clerk's office, counsel, and the FNDAB, and the judge are kind of huddled around a computer screen trying to watch that. So I think there are some real needs that not only will be beneficial in terms of making the lives of people that are in the court easier, but frankly, I think they mitigate in favor of a fairer overall experience for everyone who has contact with the court. And so I think there are some pretty noble ideas that the chief has in mind in terms of how any extra revenues might be spent. And I think it will make the whole system better.
Part of it, new revenues would help cover our expenses we already have. Aren't we short on that anyway? Time you pay for the judge and everything?
You know, I think, I think when you're talking about a police department or a court, I think you're probably always falling behind.
Well, and Mayor, I think it's a, it's a very slippery slope when you talk about revenue in the same breath as you talk about law enforcement. And so I have never told policemen to write tickets. If someone earned a ticket, they get it. And so, so I don't do this. However, I'll tell you that when you add court and police together, that's between a million and two million dollars and there's not near that revenue in there. So police is a big money loser if you want to talk about it like a business. And if you just isolated court and the fines they collect, then court is a money maker. But it's, to me, it sends a message to the community when you talk about police and you talk about generating revenue. And so this recommendation is only about putting us in the middle. It's not making us higher, it's not making us lower, it's making us in the middle of all the other cities.
I'm not disagreeing with charging that. I'm saying I don't want to go spend the money before we already get it because we're already in the red with what we're doing. So I think we gotta be careful. And I'm not saying we don't do even what Jim's saying, but you know, if it takes more time for everybody to go do it and the cost-effectiveness of what we're doing, I'm saying that helps the taxpayer out and that kind of thing. So I'm not arguing that point at all.
And I think it shifts the cost of the customer and not to the people who don't use their services.
Yeah. Any other discussion on that, guys? Roll call.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think you need to go anywhere.
Yeah. I got a question later. On the next one.
We were asked, I think a month or so ago, to revisit the truck route ordinance as far as the fine. I've been researching our city code and according to our city code, our municipal judge sets all fines assessed to people that commit crimes that go before our court. Having said that, I've spoke with Mr. Murphy and I actually talked to Judge Candy Baker a couple weeks ago at length about this. I think she's absolutely prepared to at least double what our current truck route fine is. It's currently one hundred dollars. I think she agrees it needs to be more because what we do as police officers and what we do in court is all about changing behavior. It's not so much, it's not so much the fine, it's changing that behavior of people doing. And we're seeing a lot of trucks off the truck route. We ride a lot of trucks off the truck route, but it's a hundred dollar fine.
And no court costs?
No court costs. I also talked to Judge Baker about that for some reason. Typically, on city code violations, the city of El Dorado, in most cases, like the truck route tickets, have never assessed the court cost. I thought that was kind of odd. I visited with Mr. Murphy about it and visited with Judge Baker and I think she agrees in most of those instances, and particularly the truck route, that court cost ought to be added. So I guess long and short of it, if we made the fine two hundred dollars and then added the seventy dollar court cost and you just approved it, it'd be a two-hundred-and-seventy dollar fine around that. So I hope... So I hope that answers what you asked us to look at. But like I said, I believe, I believe the judge does have the power to set that fine. The only thing it made a little problematic is, and I think it's an easy fix, if, if you look at the last paragraph of that article, the truck route ordinance is, when it talks about the penalty, it, it's a pretty short paragraph. It says, any fines in this article won't exceed a hundred dollars. Judge Baker suggested that we may make that five hundred dollars to give us some leeway in the future if, if somebody thought that some of those fines should be a little more yet. So she thought a five hundred dollar, changing that last paragraph, well, I think it's titled penalty in Tabitha, ought to change the wording from maximum fine, or fine not to exceed a hundred dollars to a fine not to exceed five hundred.
Chief, what'd be the difference between a guy getting a hundred and a guy getting five hundred? I mean, what do you base, yeah, how would you base that?
Judge.
Well, I mean, the judge, is it the way they act in court, or, I mean, cause you're either.
No, because the truck route right now is a set fine.
Okay.
It, it's, it's, it's not much different than a speeding ticket, other than it's a city ordinance where, but it's a set fine. Now, if they wanted to contest it during a trial, I assume, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burford, that they went to trial or found guilty, they could actually probably be charged more if the ordinance allowed that.
But I believe, generally speaking, there is some latitude for a judge to impose a higher fine in those kinds of circumstances. However, I think that, generally speaking, what I've seen happen here is if there's a scheduled fine and someone tries the case and is convicted, they're subject to the scheduled fine. And I think that maybe the utility of the proposal as it's written here is just that it gives the judge some latitude to change the set fine on her own initiative without necessarily having to come back and re-change the ordinance. For example, if after deliberation, Judge Baker set the off-the-truck route fine at two hundred dollars, and it transpired a year from now that it still seemed to be the case that we had the same number of people that were off the truck route and weren't changing the behavior, as the chief had alluded to, she could, within the rubric of this five-hundred-dollar maximum fine, within her power to set the fines, perhaps increase that to two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred dollars. Again, trying to effectuate the sort of change that seems to be everybody's desire here.
Do you understand? I mean, there'd be a schedule, just like today, when you get a speeding ticket, you can pay X amount of dollars, you can go into court and pay it. The judge could charge you more. There's more latitude in, I mean, all the crimes. Thousand-dollar fine and thirty days in jail. Judges have discretion. But the judge sets the normal fine. So if a truck got off route and they wanted to pay the ticket, it'd be two hundred dollars.
Plus court cost, which would make it two-hundred and seventy each. But, and to your point there, off-truck route is a city code violation. It doesn't go on the driver's license. And I can tell you that most of the trucks, truckers that we ride, they pay that fine. There's a few that have them, but that, that number is very few. So I guess what I'm saying is, if I'm a trucker, I think two-hundred-and-seventy dollars will stand a little more than a hundred. Cause apparently the hundred doesn't mean anything to them, cause they're still doing it. I mean, I think, and I think the word will get out. I think, well, the word will get out and CB will land that the fines have increased in El Dorado for off-the-truck route, maybe they'll start taking it a little more serious. But right now, I don't think, I don't think a hundred bucks is much of an incentive to keep a trucker from doing it.
What, what's the fines in surrounding cities?
You know that, I don't know. A lot of all cities have truck routes. Some do. I don't know that I can answer that question.
Okay.
I can, I can probably research it and find out.
I've got another question about truck routes, but it doesn't have anything, or trucks off route. And it doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance, so I'll ask that in new business.
Ordinance number?
Chief, eleven eighty.
I move to approve ordinance number G-one-one-eight-zero, an ordinance amending the city of El Dorado, Kansas municipal code as it relates to local traffic regulation penalties.
Second.
Got a motion in second? Any discussion? I'm sitting here thinking, a guy trying to make a living, two-hundred-and-seventy bucks.
All you gotta do is obey the law.
And law.
I understand that. But when you stop them, Chief, do, you know, they, do they not see the sign? What kind of reasons they give you for that kind of stuff?
You know, you get all kinds of reasons, but the long and short of it, it's their job to look for those signs, just like it's our job as drivers of a regular automobile to obey speed limit signs, yield signs, stop signs, everything else. I can tell you, the, the signs that we have in El Dorado are up to state code. In a lot of cases, they're better than what's required. I can tell you, they're a lot better than they used to be, you know, a number of years ago when I first hired on them. The city has continued to improve upon those signs, but they are, they are absolutely what the state requires in this case, and we put more up than what is required, so.
And then I think, I mean, one of the first stories I heard when we got here, when I got to El Dorado was a highway patrolman had been listening to the CB and heard three truckers talking about blowing through town because El Dorado doesn't ride off route, and if they pull you over, you can talk them out of it. So, so, you know, very limited experience, but in one example, we wrote three tickets that night. And it was a conscious decision to ignore the truck route. Now, maybe at one in the morning, we don't need a truck route, but.
I think we do a better job of stopping trucks today than we used to. You know, I've been on Central before, and you'd see three or four trucks, and you'd see a police car and say, you know, what's the deal? You know, but I haven't seen that recently.
Because I've been stopping and riding trucks my whole career.
Have you?
And I'm on my thirty-fifth year here, so.
Okay.
I wrote plenty of truck route tickets.
How many have we written so far this year, would you say?
You know, I haven't run that number. I don't know if I've got that for this year, but I want to say thirteen. It was around a hundred. And I bet it's more now with Thompson doing the truck inspections and everything else.
Yeah.
I'd have to pull those numbers.
Hundred for the year?
For thirteen, but I think it was one-eighty-four.
You could write a hundred tickets in one day.
Yeah, but that's about all we'd be doing.
If we could just get those other people not to break any other laws.
Yeah.
Okay. This take, this comes from a guy that has no, has nothing to do as far as Nick does, except sit around and look at, look out at the window. Yeah. I see a lot of trucks driving up and down.
Nick knows you too.
And, and don't hold me to that number, cause it may be, may be more than that. I'd have to look at it.
We'll get to that.
We, we got a lot of people writing a lot of truck route tickets, so.
So, did we, ordinance?
We got a motion in second, though.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Move on.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Mayor Fag?
Yes. Five zero.
Thank you. Am I done now, Mr. City Clerk?
I'd, I'd like to ask one question about trucks. Now, can I ask that now?
Not a thing in the world to stop you.
Okay. Er, remember the little conversation I had with you about trucks being pulled over on Central?
I had a conversation, yes. Did we see it again, something? Did you see it since?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I just wanted to.
I did, I thought to.
I think Chad passed that message to me, cause he was at staff and I wasn't, so.
We distributed it to the troops.
Okay. And, and it's, it's okay? I mean, you're agreeing with it or disagreeing with it, or being whatever?
Keep in mind that a lot of times, we don't have any control over people pulling over. You know, if it's the way I always did it, you know, if it was in front of Quick Trip or McDonald's or in McDonald's Drive or wherever, and I knew I was gonna be contained for a while, and they were capable to move that vehicle down. If somebody had an influence, we can't do that.
Yeah, sure.
If we have a truck driver that's under an influence and he stops right in front of Quick Trip, we're gonna have that tied up till we're done.
Yeah. And I don't think.
Yeah.
And just to bring you guys up on what happened was, is there, again, I get to look out the window on Central quite a bit, and here's a semi getting pulled over, and of course, it's a long one. And it's between Orchard and Quick Trip's Drive with a police car blocking the Quick Trip's Drive. And then they pulled another one over on Orchard where the police car's now kinda blocking Orchard. So you got all this traffic tied up, not being able to see, and cars going really slow. And it, it just seems to me that we should maybe think about turning the lights on when we get them out to some other place.
Here's the deal.
And, and only, only to try and avert problems for retailers.
Here's the deal, though, I'm telling you this from experience, because sometimes getting truck stops is kinda problematic. They don't see you, they don't hear you. I've had trucks where I've been behind them with a red light and siren, stopping one end of town, and they didn't stop till the other town. And I physically went over, cleared another lane, and got up beside them and door they see it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what, the message that I'm gonna give to the troops is, you know, if it's someplace like that, and you know you're gonna have it tied up for a while, if you can just have them move up, you know, somewhere that's not as problematic.
Yeah. And like I said, this, this, the only reason it brought a lot of attention, there was two of them pulled over, and two semis take a lot of room up on a, on a busy street.
That's cause y'all want us to stop trucks.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's a double-edged sword, so. Good job, Chief.
Just keep, keep, keep it up, Chief.
But also for the safety of the citizens trying to get in and out of the, that particular area.
But I absolutely agree with what you're saying, and it's all about the officer discretion. Some officer do that a little better than others, but it's just part of management. We'll, we'll let them have it.
And I have nothing against any officer, okay? And you could continue pulling them over, but just kinda hopefully.
Can I drive, can I drive a white Explorer?
Yeah, it's an Explorer.
I'll get you, I'll get out his tag number for you.
I'm parked on the same place.
Probably already know it.
I think they all know where I am.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, sorry, guys.
Okay, we ready for agenda number eleven? Does that sound right, guys?
Yes, sir.
Agenda number eleven is temporary liquor permit.
Mr. Mayor and City Commission, a couple of years ago, we passed an ordinance allowing temporary serial malt beverage licenses in the city. These are often for events like Frontier Western Days, Butler Community College. They have an event where they request a license. The state of Kansas passed a law last July allowing for the same license to be given out for liquor. So the, the city is trying, is requesting that you change our ordinance to allow for these licenses. The fee would be twenty-five dollars and pass directly to the state, and then that goes to the city. Application has to be turned in twenty-one days prior to the event. That allows the application to be approved through the city commission and through the state. The state requires fourteen days if it gets notice. The applicant would be required to provide the name of the person applying for the license, the group for which an event is planned, the location of the event, the date and time of the event, and a special event application if required. Once the application has been approved for, through the city commission, the city clerk will provide a license for the group, and it can be used. The group will be required to notify the state, though, not the city. This will allow, currently, the city of Topeka allows this, and they have wine tastings and things downtown. So it'll allow us to do some different events. If you have any other questions, I can take them.
Be interesting, what kind of fee history you got for that kind of thing around. Twenty-five dollars, pretty cheap.
That's just the state's requirement.
Okay. Do we charge anything?
No, the city doesn't require.
Can we charge something?
I think.
I don't think on beer. I think on, if I remember, and I can't say for sure on this, but on beer, it was you will charge twenty-five and you will give it all to us.
I, I wanna say that it's the same for this. I would have to check to make sure, but I'm pretty sure the state just requires it to go directly.
We used to keep serial malt, these little licenses, they stayed right in El Dorado, and then the state decided that they just wanted them. Yeah. I'm just, I guess, questioning twenty-five dollars, and we get nothing. And there's probably more issues coming up around that type of thing, and they sell a lot of it, whatever it is. So some kind of fee increase in that area, depending on what other communities do. That's what I'm trying to say.
I can look. This, this also allows other businesses to hold events outside of their physical structure. For example, the places downtown beyond Napa, Willie's Fiesta would be able to hold things, you know, outside if, if there's a special event going on, like the, I don't know, the car show, Walnut River Festival, those kind of things.
Chili Cook-Offs?
Yeah, Chili Cook-Off.
For instance, if I was having a, an open house, and I could hire them, they could get a temporary permit, come to my store, serve, serve liquor or whatever.
If you were paying. Court, they could serve it without this. But if you're gonna sell it, you gotta have a lease, right?
Correct.
I'm just trying to make it.
Yeah, correct.
Just trying to keep a lease, or did. I'm saying the twenty-five dollars going to the state, the city ought to be entitled to something. And we're gonna do some paperwork, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we're gonna be doing this, too.
We, we are required to do very little paperwork for this. The only thing I, I do actually is fill out the certificate for you to sign.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number G-eleven-eighty-one?
Yes.
An ordinance relating to sale of liquor on a temporary premise.
I'll second that. Got a motion in second? Any discussion?
I think this will be a nice thing to have, cause I know there's been several events downtown where people have wanted to kinda maximize them and offer some other things, and this will allow them to do that, so. I think it'll be good.
This requires a roll call.
Ready?
Yeah, any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Okay, we ready for agenda number twelve, new business discussions? Who'd like to start in that area?
I'll start. Last week, we had, for our Frontier Western Celebration, a great turnout at all the events that I, that I was able to attend, the Miss Frontier pageant. I think our Miss Frontier winner was Allison McKibben. It was a, Chase, you did an awesome job up there with Kathy, by the way, emceeing that. It was a great event. I think Friday night, they had a fashion show downtown at District one forty-two, and kind of an open house and all their little shops within, in there. I got to attend that with my wife and daughter, and then go down to Posh and Robbins afterwards and buy some stuff that they saw the ladies in the fashion show wearing, so. It was a wonderful night. The rodeo was, went, went well. The weekend, got to watch some mud volleyball. I guess the long and short of this is, I, I really am glad that we are doing what we can to expand some of these, you know, festivals, these events that we have in town. It's, it's great seeing the community out, interacting at all these, at all the events. So I just wanna commend everybody that worked on, on, on this festival, on the Frontier Western Celebration. And, and I look forward to other festivals throughout the year and Frontier Western next year, so. And congratulations to Ally for winning the crown this year. So, that's it.
Well, you took mine.
Well, you took mine. So I can't. But I was going to just say, I mean, I'm noticing our different organizations are putting forth more effort to kind of collaborate on some things, like the addition, what they did down at District one forty-two. I think CDB and Main Street, possibly the Chamber, were involved in that. And so I appreciate them taking those steps to kind of be more conscious of working together in that collaboration. So I encourage to keep that going, and congrats everyone at Main Street and the festival committee.
Throw this in there real quick. And those retailers, Robbins and Posh, that participated in the fashion show itself, were very complimentary of CDB and the work that the city put in, and Main Street, and Chamber, and everything. You know, that collaboration has paid off, and our local businesses are noticing that, so.
Heard the same thing, so. Yep. Nope, you're good.
There's probably a question for Brad, and he isn't here, but are we, is our mosquito sprayer going around now?
Yes, sir.
I got asked that the other day.
That's all I've got. I echo the commissioners on their talk on the Frontier Days, and that's all I got.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Echo.
I had somebody, and you live down this neighborhood, Dave, Nick, somebody said, Mike, can you drive down Olive Street? And so I drive down Olive Street. We have some major things that we need to fix on that street, and that's a thoroughfare. Do you guys agree with that or not? You go home, you drive down Olive Street, and you look at that.
At what?
At the potholes.
Atchison, right in there by Atchison and Olive on the south side of the road?
Yeah.
There's been one. There was a water problem or something there, wasn't there, Herb?
Hmm.
If I remember right, I think there was sewer, water sewer. There was something down there, wasn't there, Scott?
Yes.
Well, that road is one year younger than Third Street was, and we've already replaced Third Street. There you go.
It is in the CIP to get repaired, and really thinking something should be done next year.
Next year.
A lot of times with those sales tax projects, you'll plan that out in the CIP and list these streets, but as you all know, the conditions of streets kind of change as time goes by. And Olive is something where we're seeing some deterioration of the asphalt. And maybe I haven't noticed so much of the potholes, but there is a lot of cracking and alligatoring, however you want to say that, but it's in rough shape. And so.
I know that spot there on the south side of Olive, right there on Atchison, right before you get to Atchison, be the southwest.
So we want to double here to make sure that's on the list for next year, number one. Number two, I think we need to get out and fix some potholes if that's going to. I hit a couple, Mike Carver, when he's down there, that I thought, you know, the guy was right to call me, so. We need to, that being a thoroughfare. I wanted to ask you guys too, are we going to have any more? Where are we at on our budget? Are we going to have another meeting at all?
I don't believe so, Mayor. It went to the paper today.
Okay. Well.
I was under the understanding that we were going to try to submit our questions by that Monday, and then maybe if we had kind of that communication via email, then from then decide if we needed to schedule that last one. I saw the emails kind of come out last week, and I wasn't, I was completely unavailable with Frontier Days and those commitments and everything after five.
I didn't see any emails. Did we send any?
I saw the email come through. I think you were wanting to maybe get together last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think my biggest thing is, and Er, you might kind of review this in a minute, on our budget, all the increases that I see, and I have a whole bunch of them marked in here, that's what I wanted to discuss. And I could spend a week writing on this, and I'd rather have, instead of, I'd rather have discussions on it than emails, and they ought to be public discussions.
And I think what the commission told you is they did them.
Okay. They had presentations. Did we have discussions?
Absolutely.
Then what areas in here did any of the commissioners say, you know, that's a little high and let's change this? And what changes did we make to this document? Because we just got this document at the last meeting.
Mike, are you wanting to lower the mill levy?
I'm wanting to review all the expenses.
Are you wanting to lower the mill levy?
Well, let's, no, I don't want to lower that, but I don't want to increase either. So I want to understand where our expenses are at.
Here's the bad thing about it. You missed two meetings, and you were late to two, okay?
What did I miss in those two meetings?
Well, I don't know. I really couldn't tell you what you missed.
Okay.
But there was a budget discussion.
I read the minutes on it. Wasn't anything in the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, if you would like, I can give you the DVD so you can see. The first meeting that you missed was the one on the department head presentations. It was about an hour and forty minutes.
Right.
And the commission discussed with each department head what their budgets were for next year and the changes that they had made. And then the second meeting that you missed was on outside agencies, and the commission had a lengthy discussion with those agencies about working together and about future changes they wanted to see in the budgets with them.
Okay, did we make any changes at all with any of that stuff?
Yeah.
I believe there were several.
We made one five-thousand-dollar change.
They made a change with the Broncos. They did not make changes to the outside agencies other than the Broncos. They said that next year, they would be looking at changing some of those budgets. And then with the city staff, they had already made several changes before they met with the commission from the first budget you received, I believe, in May, April.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, this is where I'm coming from. These are all presentations that you're talking about, and we got information from them. And I attended three or four of them. I don't know how many we had altogether. Every one of these was four o'clock in the afternoon, and so I took away from work three or four times. And there's twice that I could not get away from. I'm still thinking that we need to have a discussion on after this is presented, and when I was a commissioner, we did that. We literally sit down, have a discussion after all the presentations that sits down and does this. Now, if this has already went to that, I just want everybody to know why I'll be voting no on this is because I don't like the process. That's.
And I hear where you're coming from. I just wish that, and this is all due respect, I wish that you would have been more vocal about that when they had scheduled, because we got the meeting schedule for budgets in like December?
In December of two thousand thirteen.
I mean, it was months ago.
And the whole schedule was sent out to.
And we just needed to kind of, I mean, if that was something, we needed to have that discussion months ago to say that we wanted to redo this process.
This was given to us at the last meeting.
But you knew the process last year, and you could have said that you wanted to get.
I disappointed last year, and that's why I voted no last year.
But we should have, you know what I mean? We need to bring that up earlier.
Yeah.
Because the schedule was.
Can you describe to me how we're going to pay for all these increases? Because I could go through the list here, and there's fifteen percent, twenty percent. There's increases all over this thing. It's got to come from somewhere, so if you're not raising the mill levy, where's it coming from?
Mayor.
We've had these, we've had this discussion.
No, I'd like to know. It's time for people to know where that must come from.
And I believe I've told you.
Okay, tell me again.
How many times do I need to tell you, and then we'll talk about it?
One more time.
We're going to take care of it managing expenses with revenue, just like we do every year. Just because you have money.
You said we took this out of the extras, we had reserves at the last meeting.
No, it's not, Mayor. I told you the same thing last meeting, and when I told you that, it's just like your checkbook. Just because you've got a hundred dollars in your checkbook, does it mean you're going to spend it?
No, but.
There you go. There's no but on that. The answer is no.
To me now, Herb, you have a budget for a reason. It holds you accountable to the way you're spending the money. It slows down the trips to Tennessee to buy a dozen trees, that kind of stuff. I like to have a budget so that we have something to hold you accountable to what we're doing.
Okay, how's that working? How many times have we bounced a check since I've worked for the City of El Dorado?
I've bounced it because we got it high enough that you don't have to be accountable for it.
Who has it high enough, Mayor?
The budget.
Who has it high enough? Who voted for it, Mayor?
We approved the budget.
You hadn't voted last year for it?
That's right.
Okay, how did we do? Have we bounced any checks?
We did. The commission did. We voted for it. Whether it was four to one or not, we still voted for it, and that's what it is. And Mayor, I'm sorry, if you don't like the process, then I don't know what to tell you.
I do.
But the commission is a whole.
Spin down the reserves again, Mayor, so you have no reserves.
Is that what we did last year?
That's what you did when you were elected the first time.
And you're saying we're not doing it this year?
I am.
You are spinning down reserves?
No!
Okay. So we're going to go through this with all these increases, and you're going to, why do we show the increases if you're going to control with the expenses?
Because, Mayor, I don't know who's quitting tomorrow. I don't know who's getting fired tomorrow. I don't know what vacancies open.
Just like.
I don't know who's going to have family insurance.
Like they told us.
I don't know how much retirement they're going to have. I don't know any of it.
Hold on a second, Herb. Hold on a second. It's like they told us, Mayor. They have to, they have to budget for every position being filled, whether they're filled or not. They have to budget for every employee being on insurance, whether they are or not.
Yeah.
That has a lot to do with it. That was explained to us.
That was explained to us in last year's process, and that was explained to us in this year's process when we.
And that may have been one of the meetings you were not present at.
No, that was explained to us at the last work session as well.
And I work for, I mean, I work for an operation where we are under a pretty strict budget, and we are operated by a board of directors, and it's the same, the very same thing. I mean, just because we are given that budget and they approve that budget doesn't mean that that is what we live and die by, because situations throughout the year, month to month, change, and you have to make adjustments, and you have to manage it, which is what.
You have to allow for contingencies.
You've got to plan for the worst. You've got to expect, I mean, I deal with this on a whole different situation every month. And it's damn near impossible to think that you can just sit here and approve a budget, and it'd be exactly the way it is on paper, week to week, month to month. It'd be impossible for me to do my job. I know it's a bit different, but I'm just saying it's very similar.
Well, let's put it this way, because I'm in a minority on this. I felt like we should have had more discussion. That's where I'm coming from. We didn't have it. It's already this way. The other four feel that way. I did my homework, and I know the questions I had in here, and I never get to really present that.
And the only thing I'll say to that, Mayor, is we agreed, I believe, in that last work session that you would have at least brought it up by that Monday. We were going to email some of the questions and decide if we were going to schedule that meeting, and that wasn't brought up by that Monday. Until later in the week, I got emails saying, can we call a meeting, and I couldn't. I mean, you guys would have been more than welcome to, but I think we kind of collectively decided you included.
From the time we got this, Chase, the time that we could sit down and work this and have questions was a very, very short time.
I understand that, but I think you could have at least said by that Monday that we needed, that you needed to call that meeting.
And I don't, I mean, it depends on what you called not very much time.
We had five days.
Five days go through eighty-one pages, and I can go through here and show you twenty-three percent increase.
No, you had that budget, you've had that budget for months.
Forty-two percent.
You didn't have the final all put together till a month ago, but you've had the document for a long time.
Okay. Now, does this document match what goes in the paper? Yes or no?
It's a different, it's a different form.
Oh, it's a different form. Now, can we each have a complete copy of that thing coming to us? I'd like to see that, compare that to this.
All you need are two more votes.
Okay. You all signed, you all signed a budget that goes to Topeka, and there's about thirty pages, I'm guessing, to this that we never see.
I think there's one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're right.
You receive the budget before the next meeting when you vote on it. You'll receive the whole budget, and you'll receive exactly what the paper gets plus more, because the paper only gets a page that goes to the state.
I understand that, Tab.
But everything else will come to you.
The whole thing.
Everything will come to you. It does every year.
What was that?
I don't know about every year.
Well, I mean, it's in the paper.
It's a public record. You can.
Thirty pages, maybe. Not the stuff that puts that together.
That's impossible.
There is no.
It'd be a long paper.
We fill out a page.
You fill out one page, and there's other stuff that goes with that.
That one page.
Is there other stuff that goes with that?
That one page is developed from several spreadsheets that you fill out, and it goes into, all into the one page.
But Mayor, that's just like the audit. You know, the audit's only a book this thick, but it goes to file cabinets for stuff. You, we pull from a multitude of sources.
If you guys don't want to see it, I do.
And you're, and Mr. Mayor, the packet that you have in front of you is where we get the information for that one page.
That's what I want to know. So I'd like to see that when we get it compared to this. That's what I'd like to see.
Like to see what?
He wants to see the budget book.
See the budget that we signed.
That's, it's what you guys have.
What's our total expenses for next year?
I believe it's all in the paper. It will be in the paper.
You know how much expenses are for next year on the budget, huh?
My guess would be that they'd have these answers if you would email them ahead of time.
I don't know.
My guess would be that they'd have these answers if you email them ahead of time.
You want real expenses? You want actual expenses?
I want what's on the budget.
So.
We want.
You have it.
It's not in here. The twenty-eight million or whatever is not in here.
Do you have, yes, it is.
Okay, what page is it on?
No, you got to add them up, Mayor.
Oh, we got to add them up.
Well, you're asking us to give you the pages that we have to add up is.
I'm asking for the thing that goes to the paper. That's the one-page deal with all the deals.
It's in the paper.
She said numerous times that we're going to get that in the packet. We're going to get the page that goes to the paper.
Okay, let's get off of that, because I know I'm a minority, and it's already going to vote, and that's okay. Question on page forty-three, it says unrealized gains and losses on investments, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand nine forty-three oh one.
I move that we terminate the budget discussion.
I'm asking a question.
You're asking questions that we agreed as a commission at the last work session that you'd email. If you wanted, here's the thing, Mayor. If you wanted real answers to the questions, you'd email so that they could provide the answers to you, rather than getting on camera and blindsiding them and saying, well, I need to know this, you need to research this, why don't you know this answer right off the top of your head? If you email the questions ahead of time, they're going to have those answers for you.
There's a motion in a second on the floor.
Is there any discussion? Ladies and gentlemen, I did my work.
As did the rest of us.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah. I don't like that, but we did.
Well, I haven't seen any questions.
Well, you know what? We haven't seen any questions emailed from you either.
If we were doing the email process, where's the?
Parliamentary procedure, call the vote.
All those in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Could I get the number?
I'll do a five oh on that. Okay, is there anything else?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, I'm.
I move adjourned.
Second.